Now 1:30 and the regular meeting of the City Planning and Zoning Board will come to order. Today is Thursday, March 17th. And preliminary matters, agenda additions or deletions?
The staff has none, Mr. Chairman.
Approval of the minutes from our last meeting, March 3rd.
I make a move to approve the minutes.
We have a second?
I do.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public comment. Today, our issues are quasi judicial, but you have the right to speak on any other subject at this point in time. So if there's something you'd like to talk about that's not in regard to this particular issue, you can come forward at this time and it's open to the public for you to speak. And seeing nobody coming forward, then I'm going to close public comment. That generally means that you're going to speak on additional issues. The public hearing, the first one, is a site plan application submitted for 1745 SR60 LLC to construct a 14,115 square foot, four-story commercial building at 1745 20th Street. And the number on that one is SP1500021. And is there any disclosure from the Planning and Zoting Board members of any ex parte communication?
I have none. I just want to note that I do know where the site is. I travel it all the time, so.
I think we all do, yes. And we're going to now swear in all applicants and staff and all witnesses collectively by the city clerk.
If you're going to testify on this case, if you'll stand and raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guide.
I do.
Thank you.
All exhibits will become part of our up here. Staff presentation, you're going to, who's going to do it, Tim? You or?
I will. I will. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. As the chairman mentioned, this is a proposed site plan application that includes the construction of a four-story, 15,000-plus square feet commercial building with proposed mixed of retail, general, and medical office uses. Project site is located, is designated, excuse me, in the MX mixed-use land use and the zoning classification is downtown district. You all may remember a few months back, the applicants came before you for a change in zoning and land use amendment. And that was, both amendments were approved by the city council. The subject property address is 1745 State Road 60 or 20th Street, which is located east of 18th Avenue and the project site abuts the south side of 20th Street or State Road 60 westbound. The site is currently vacant and the proposed site plan was evaluated based on our land development regulations. And the staff included that in your background packet along with additional information that's part of today's record. The site plan was also reviewed by our Public Works Department and other departments, including fires, safety, Public Works, engineering, et cetera. The proposed site plan does meet all open space, stormwater management, parking, landscaping, and other regulations. This project in particular includes an analysis of the parking requirements for potential uses such as they're potentially proposing a combination of retail, general, and medical offices, but they've also included in the site plan general office uses only. So they've given themselves an option, but the review was based on the most intense uses, which would be the retail, general, and medical office. So that's how the parking was reviewed and analyzed. And also unique in the downtown zoning district, there are a couple of parking exemptions as well as the parking is required to be located in the rear of the buildings. Also unique to this zoning district is the building heights. The maximum height of buildings is 50 feet and you have, you're allowed an additional 15 feet for architectural embellishments such as a roof for a maximum height of 65 feet. The staff reviewed all the land development regulations and have found that the site plan does meet all those regulations. In addition to the land development regulations, the code also requires us to look at three site design performance standards for the site plan, one of which is the internal circulation of the project, such as the design and the layout of the driveways and the proposed design and the layout of the internal driveways, the parking, the internal movements, et cetera. All meet the land development regulations and have been reviewed by all the applicable departments, including, as I mentioned earlier, the fire department. The second site design performance standard steals mostly with external site design. And the project includes a driveway connection along westbound State Road 60 or 20th Street and access via the alley to the south of the property. All the applicable Florida Department of Transportation driveway permits are required for this project since it abuts the state road. And the driveway connections, they're typical and they're similar to other projects in the vicinity. The staff does find that the proposed site plan is compliant with the site design standards. The third site design standard that the code requires us to review is, well, basically, will the proposed project, the arrangement of the buildings, the parking, et cetera, will they be in the unreasonable disruptive impacts on adjacent properties in terms of noise, odor, traffic, et cetera? As we mentioned earlier, to the north and across 17th, excuse me, 20th Street, State Road 60, there's an existing church and the zoning surrounding this property is mostly all commercial. To the east and the west, there are existing offices and some commercial uses. To the south, there are vacant properties, but they are zoned POI, professional office The proposed project, as mentioned, is abuts the south side of State Road 60, 20th Street westbound, and that's a state road and a principal arterial roadway. The applicant did provide a traffic impact statement or analysis of the proposed traffic impacts for the project. And project is anticipated to generate an additional maximum of 322 annual daily trips, which results in approximately 36 PM peak hour trips. And we've included a copy of that traffic impact statement in your backup. And according to the Indian River County Traffic Engineering data records, there is sufficient capacity on State Road 60 to accommodate the proposed increase in traffic. So based on those findings, the staff does find that the site plan is compliant with the third site design performance standard. And then in addition to those site plan standards, there are also a few more general development standards that the code requires us to look at, such as the mechanical and utility equipment is screened from the right of way? Is the proposed waste removal and recycling area screened? And also the exterior lighting? The code requires that it be shielded and not to deflect onto adjoining properties and public streets with some cutoff lighting. All three of those development standards are met by the proposed site plan and the staff does find that the site plan is compliant with the referenced development standards. We do have a few findings and recommendations, but basically, our staff is recommending approval of the site plan with those conditions that are outlined in your backup, and they are fairly straightforward with the addition of receiving all the state permits and compliance with the tree removal permit. With that, that is staff's brief overview of the site plan, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You're not going to call any witnesses?
No, not at this time.
May I ask a couple of questions? May I ask a couple of questions? Thank you. Sherry, when you originally started, you said that the square footage was going to be 15,000 plus?
It's 14,000 plus. Excuse me, I have allergies, so it's 14,115 square feet. Apologize for that.
And yes, big allergy season. I know. Then on the site design performance standards, page two on the bottom, I'm trying to follow the, you know, the analysis and the finding. Are they kind of blended together in there? Is the finding blended in with the analysis?
Page two on the bottom, what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Yes. In other words, item one and item two, they each have individual analysis in the staff report, but the findings are together, yes, both two.
And they're under the analysis.
That's correct.
Okay, fine. And on that alleyway that's in the back, that's being used now for vehicular traffic?
Yes, that's correct.
Does it provide two-way traffic there?
Yes, I believe so. Let me just verify that real quick.
There's no plans to change that, is there?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And there's no parking along there? It's just strictly?
It's access, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Additional questions of staff?
I just have one. On the project description in fact sheet, page two of two, on the bottom, it says, "Note one, parking is required to be located in the rear of the building. The first 30 spaces are exempt and the remainder is required parking reduced by 50 percent." Could you explain that, please?
Yes. That's a unique allowance, I guess, if you will, in the code for the downtown zoning district. The first 30 spaces are exempt, and then after that, you are allowed to decrease that by half. And all the parking is required to be at the rear of the building.
Okay, thank you.
And the idea, if I can expand, is the downtown district more so pedestrian-oriented, walkable, et cetera. That was the idea when the code was put into place to encourage on-street parking, et cetera.
Thank you.
When you say it's exempt, exempt from what?
It's exempt in the sense that it, the other code, zoning code requirements for parking, you don't have that exemption. In other words, you don't have 30 spaces that are taken off the top of the required parking. So 30 spaces are exempt right off.
So you need 30 less spaces under this code than you would if you were following in another part of the city?
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct.
Okay. So I understood that.
And then reduce by half. So that's an additional reduction.
So now instead of 30, it's 15, or it's another 15? So you're exempting 45. Trying to figure out what you're, you know, how you interpret our code here.
Sure. It's basically 15, and then you're exempted for 30, and then you're reduced by half to 15.
So you're only exempted by 15, not 30?
No, you calculate how much parking's required, minus 30, and then whatever's left, you divide it by two.
Correct.
Ah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in this case, it's, you know, if you say you have 30, oh, say 45, you know, you get 15 left and then you reduce it by half to seven, and it's an example.
Just in the downtown?
Yes.
I do have questions on how the height was calculated, but can I wait until after the step of the applicant's presentation?
Sure, that's up to you.
Okay, fine. On the map that we have back here, no way could I come up, I kept coming up with like 57 feet, six inches, trying to calculate all of the, this is on the last map where it says the 1745 building?
Yes, the elevation drawings?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what's on your screen right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Could you explain to me?
Sure, sure.
I could not come up with 50 or 65.
Sure. The easiest way for me to do that is if I could just go up to the screen and show you.
Thank you, yeah. Now, the 50 is permissible with the 15 for the embellishment.
Embellishments that are on you.
Now, the, what I see as embellishment down here is the parapets, and do I see that measured at six feet, eight inches?
That's correct.
Yes.
So basically, from here to here, it's 50, oops, didn't mean to do that. Sorry about that.
It's almost 50 feet to the base of the parapets and then the additional six.
Forty-nine.
That adds, that adds that extra six.
But how does that comply with our code?
The code says 50 feet, and that's to the parapet, the bottom of the parapet. The embellishment is the parapet.
Parapet is the embellishment.
And the embellishment is six feet, eight inches?
That's correct.
And it could be as high as 15.
It's a decoration.
Oh, I understand.
It could be higher than that.
So below that, it's 50 feet?
Just, yes, yes.
Exactly 50.
Well, just a little under there. Forty-nine feet, four inches.
Yeah. Just a little under there.
Okay. And they start measuring from the crown of the road?
The base elevation.
The base elevation, which I believe is 18-inch, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the whole idea is the downtown should have a higher density than the rest of the area.
Yeah.
And I mean, I know we get criticized about it, you got too many stories, but, you know, you want downtown to be a downtown.
But that's been code, that's established.
And that's exactly right.
Yeah.
So according to the development specifications, the maximum square footage of a building, a four-foot, a four-story building would be 29,300 square feet. This is going to be 14,115 because the first floor is basically going to be mostly parking. Is that correct?
No, just to clarify, the zoning code does not designate a maximum floor area ratio in this district, but the staff went through when we updated their comprehensive plan, and we put in a maximum of 2.0 floor area ratio in that district, which is consistent with what you see throughout that district. So the maximum floor area ratio for the downtown district is 2.0. In this particular case, this project is way below that. It's below 1.
It's .9, right.
Yeah, exactly.
I understand. And also, I see that the parking, all the exemptions that we'd get, we'd all require 15 parking spaces, but they're proposing 25. So that's, that is better.
That is correct. They're proposing more parking.
Putting more than they require.
That is correct.
That's correct, good.
And Mrs. Fitzgerald, for the record, what's the total height of the building? What's the total height?
Sure. The total height of the building, once again, as we were talking earlier, it's 50 feet for the building itself.
And your embellishments?
And the embellishment's about seven feet.
So how much?
So a total of 57.
Fifty-seven foot, okay.
Correct. And the maximum allowed is 65, so it's below that threshold. You're welcome.
I have another question, Mr. Chair, from Mrs. Fitzgerald. In the event that the building owners later on in the future would like to change the top floor out to apartment and living, is that permissible in this type of zoning?
Mixed use is permissible in this zoning, so in the future, if they decide they would like to do that, they could apply for that change, yes.
Thank you.
Residential, they would have to come in and?
They would have to come in for, would they have to come in for that?
Yes, as a change.
They have to get approval, at least administrative approval from the staff unless it's, depending on how many units, they may trigger having to go to you all.
Is there any safety things there when it's residential, as composed of commercial?
Oh, yeah, they're going to have to, the building comes into play.
The code, to meet the residential.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Additional questions of staff? You okay?
There were two, if I can find it here. There were two photographs of the front of the building.
Yes.
And I see that there, it varies with the windows. Is that?
Yes.
Is that aesthetic, or is that?
That is, that is aesthetic. The applicant wanted to make sure that you all just were aware that they have some options. They may go with an alternative A, which was, you know, more windows, if you will. I think we have it on your, there it is, with a series of windows in the front, or alternate B, which is the full glass front. And that's completely a design option that the applicant may or may not choose.
Is this site located within the Arts Village that is being developed with the cultural council and the staff? Or is it outside that bind?
I believe this is outside it because this is up on westbound of Sayrod 60, so it'd be just outside the boundary.
So the Arts Village would be the east, be south of the east?
Yeah, I believe that's the area, and.
Yeah, but it did reference Edgewood.
Right. Edgewood is.
It's on the peripheral of Edgewood.
It's on, it's.
Well, if you were listening.
It's in between the twin pears, what this place is, right?
That's true.
Right.
Yes.
If you were listening to the discussion the other night, the Arts Village does kind of bleed over into the downtown district, which I don't think the overlay is going to cover the downtown, or we get into some issues, as I brought up at the meeting, so.
Is that an existing tree in that photograph, or?
Yes.
That's a beauty.
From the audience, we got a yes.
They're keeping it, right? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions of staff? If not, we'll bring the applicant forward. Joe, please state your name and additional information.
My name is Joseph Schulke. Joe Schulke, Benel渡, Vera Beach, Florida. Our offices are located on 17th Street and Indian River Boulevard, and I'm happy to be here today and talk to you about our project. I brought a packet in case you guys were interested in seeing it, just more color elevations from all those different sides and a colored site plan. And I'll give one, I have enough, I think, so the city can have a record, so.
Good to be here.
Thanks. Thanks, Joe.
Joe, thank you very much.
All right. More pictures. There's your tree, too.
I'll give it to Tim.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. I think it'll be brief today. Staff did a great job in their presentation. The questions were minimal from P and Z. I'm sure you'll have a few more, but I'll try to elaborate on some of the answers as well as I go along. First, I want to say, we started this project about 11 months ago, and we went and met with staff, Bill Messer Smith, who's now retired, and Tim, just to talk about the project. And I think staff was excited to see something happen in downtown, and we were excited to hear that they were excited. Going further down the road, we went through rezoning and land use, so this commission had heard a little bit about this project in, I think it was December or January, and I think it was unanimously recommended for approval. We went to city council and they unanimously approved that as well. I think everybody thinks it's a great idea to develop and see some redevelopment in the downtown area, and we're very excited to be part of that. About three, four weeks ago, the cultural, and I don't know the exact terminology, what they call themselves, but the Arts District had a meeting at the Heritage Center, which I attended, and I was excited to hear about that, too. Certainly, at least at that time, they were talking about that limits was going to be south of our site, was kind of on the south side of State Road 60 going down, which I understood almost to like the freshman learning center, and then east towards 14th Avenue area and that area. So we're just outside of it. We were asked, not by staff, but actually, and you guys, some of you may saw, there's an article in the Press Journal today, but we were asked about the writer, about residential and, you know, is a residential component? And we said, no, we really didn't think it was appropriate in this particular site. There's a different feel between traveling eastbound on State Road 60 and westbound on State Road 60. When you go westbound, you're past the courthouse, you're passing attorney's offices, you're passing Nick's Cafe, you're passing the church, and there's really no residential units at all. On the east side, eastbound State Road 60, you get more of that feel, it's really a truly mixed area, and I think it, you know, so we're excited to see that and excited to work on future projects in that area with the Arts District, but I just wanted to kind of address that. So we went through the process after rezoning, and we met with DOT, had a pre-app, and they approved our access locations. They have asked us, and you may or may not have noticed on the site plan, but we have kind of stub outs to our properties to both the east and the west. The DOT likes to see interconnectivity. It limits so many, it gives you potential to get on the site from different locations. It also not only encourages vehicles to go back and forth, but also pedestrians, the easier, more easily access to different sites and what have you. So there are stub outs on the east and west property lines to the adjacent properties. In the present, the stub out probably won't work right away for the flower box because they have some parking there, but it'll probably be redeveloped one day. It works perfectly for the commercial building next door to us to the east, so we have that I gave you colored elevations. You saw the two that staff put up here, and that's two alternative looks. The idea going forward was to try to make it look a little bit sort of like the courthouse look, and especially if you look at that version right there with the windows, I think it emulates that a lot. The idea is marketing, a marketing idea is probably professional office primarily to attorneys. We wanted to reserve the right for medical on one floor and then retail on the first floor if it happens. We imagine the type of retail might be supportive of professional businesses, whether it's kind of a print shop or a computer tech-type shop or something like that, along those lines. And then the upper floors, second, third, and fourth would probably be professional offices, either builders, title companies, attorneys, potentially a doctor, you know, a medical, but I imagine it'd be something that's, wouldn't have a lot of traffic or volumes, a smaller space anyway. The project is proposed to be a condo, potentially up to two condos per floor. Marketing is selling each floor or renting each floor, but they have it as a condo, so there's an ability for people to own a floor of the building if they wanted to. The last thing is, I'll try to answer questions. Honeymanus, you had asked about the alleyway, I think, in the back?
Yeah.
And the alley really functions, it sort of functions as a two-way, but it's wide enough for one way. But all these alleys in the city region function that way. You'll notice where our driveway is and our parking area is, we widen it for full two alleyway width, I mean, a two driveway width, so we made it extra wide behind our particular property, so we'd never have any issues no matter which way people are traveling. We also ensure that, you know, fire department can get their ladder truck through the site and provided the radiuses and what have you, so we have great access from that perspective. You talked about the height, and I want to confirm, you know, it's about 49 foot, 10 inches, I think, to the actual rooftop and 6 foot, 8 inches to the top of the parapet, so that gives you maybe 56 and a half feet top, and the code allows you to go 50 plus 15 or 65, so we're well below that. Let's see. The parking, we were, you know, you had some questions about the parking, and downtown district has an exemption for parking for development in that area, and it's minus 30 and then divided by two. You know, we recognize that, you know, that's great, encourages redevelopment, encourages the use of the public parking in the area, but we did want to have, you know, parking on our site and what we think is a marketing advantage because none of the buildings on that whole block have any parking to speak of, I mean, really. We would love to see the city work more strongly or encourage, and I think the city is trying to get parking on State Road 60 and reduce a lane of traffic in both our exits. We think it'd be great and love to see that and be fully supportive of it. Love that parking on State Road 60 in front of our site as well. Trying to look at my list. I think I covered everything because there wasn't a lot of questions. I gave you the colored drawings. I think I gave you every elevation, front side, rear, gave you a colored site plan, and then we gave you an aerial with a colored site plan over top of it, so you can see the project relative to the other buildings in the area and see how it sets. If you have any questions on that or anything else, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think that'll conclude what I have to present. be happy to answer them. But I think that'll conclude what I have to present.
Questions of Joe?
Great overhead. Puts it all under perspective. Thank you.
Joe, on the alleyway that's passed through, is there parking in that alley or is it going to be exempt from parking?
No, we have parking on our site, but it is accessed by the alley. But that's why we widened the alley. The alley's only 15 foot wide. We put another seven or eight foot of pavement. So you got a total of 22 foot of pavement.
So that's legal parking? That will be legal parking then within the alley on one side or the other?
Yeah, well, actually, like I said, the parking's not actually, that parking is on our site. It's almost like on-street parking where you pull off the alley and park, but it's entirely on our site. And not only that, but we widened the alley, the drivable area from 15 feet in the alley to another eight feet into our site before you get to the parking. So you have a nice wide area to maneuver.
So if it's not being used for your parking, it becomes accessibility for two cars to pass each other's.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
On the drawing you have up there now, it shows the turn radius for a fire truck going in there. The fire truck would not be able to exit with the alleyway because it is not wide enough, right?
No, the way we have the little island on the, the landscape island, if you will, it stops short and then it's just striped paint so that they can, they can make that turn. They actually can make that turn. We ran it through there.
So they can make the turn on.
Yes, sir, although they.
Because I don't want them backing out into state.
Yeah, no, they didn't require it, but we designed it that way. They can get through. That's why we shortened that island and we have the striping instead of, so they drive over the striping area.
Like the strip four, if you will. So that means that they wouldn't have to back out then to get out of the property?
Correct.
Good. Thank you.
Additional questions of Joe?
I have a couple, Mr. Chair, Mr. Schulke. Your stormwater management, explain a little bit about that, how that's going to take place on your site. How are you going to handle your stormwater?
Absolutely. We're using what they call Storm Tech Chambers. You may have heard of exfiltration trench, which is basically a pipe, perforated pipe with a rock bed under the parking. This is kind of the next step and next evolution in that type of technology. And these are chambers. So instead of one pipe, it's multiple elliptical pipes all next to each other. And we've got the whole, almost the whole area underneath the driveway on the south side of the building in that chamber. So you have these chambers, which holds a large volume of water, and that's surrounded by rock as well. So we're able to hold all the water from the 25-year storm for design criteria. But that's where it goes. And not only that, but we have direct connection from our roofs into the manholes that go into that too. So we're directing every bit of the water right to the edge of the property, the alley, all the way up to the sidewalk and the roof, all into the system and not going offsite.
All right, so you're handling it on-site. Okay, thank you. Next question, your mechanical units, ACs, et cetera. Are you going to have those placed on top of the roof, behind your walls? Are they going to be down below on the first floor?
The site plan that you have in front of you shows eight air handlers, or I'm sorry, the AC units on the west side of the building, behind a fence and with shrubs on the north and south side. Some of them may go on the roof eventually, but they'll be hidden because you see the parapet's six foot eight tall, so you wouldn't see it anyway. But so, and it may be a combination of both, depending on the economies of running the copper and running everything from the roof down or from the side up. But there's actually an existing fence there, the flower box. I don't know who built it, was it a flower box or previous owner of this lot, but what we're proposing is just replace that with a new fence, a nice looking white fence. So it'll be behind the fence and we have shrubs kind of planted on either side in the landscape plant, so you can't see it from the front or rear.
So you have attic, in the event that you folks down the road choose to put some units up on the roof or some other mechanical running devices, your walls up on the top there will be adequate in heights to hide the units?
Oh, yes, sir. Like I said, the walls are about six foot eight and those AC units are lower than this podium.
Next thing I wanted to ask about, since you have things on the ground, some of the stuff that we have in existing commercial buildings downtown, some of the units whine when they get a little bit of age on them. What type of stuff are you guys going to use? And I know you're aware of some of the high-pitched whines and I know you know what affects people around about you, especially other office users.
Frankly, you know, we haven't discussed that. We would hope that, you know, with the more modern equipment and new equipment, it's not going to whine, but you know, usually it's an indication that bearings are failing or something. And, you know, it'll be condo and there'll be condo docks and I'm certain that we'll have rules in there that, you know, that require maintenance and so you're not basically causing a nuisance.
Okay.
Not only for adjacent property owners, but the other office or business owners in this building.
Okay. Thanks for putting that out on the record as to required maintenance later.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. That takes care of my questions, Mr. Chair.
One more.
Go ahead.
Since this is facing westbound State Road 60, the egress from ingress, the egress off the property will only go westbound.
Yes, it's only a in, in and out. You're going to go westbound, take a left in, and then you got to take a left out to go out. And that's all to prove. Fortunately, we do have the alley and, which goes 18th. So we'll, you know, people that know, especially the people that are on a daily basis, that are coming from the west, they can go eastbound State Road 60, left on 18th, right into the alley and get in right that way.
So that alley really accesses between the two roads on either side?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
And then there's a reference on the map that's entitled Site Plan about a future interconnect per the FDOT. Could you explain that?
Yes. When we went to the DOT to ask for, what they call, they give you a pre-application conference and they give you conceptual approval of your access connection. And at that point, the DOT is getting, they're really starting to flex their muscles in controlling access and everything else. And they said, we could have the access on State Road 60 with one condition, that we provide stubouts for future interconnects for the properties to the east and to the west. And that is really in the hopes of eliminating as much traffic going out of one driveway and, you know, trying to get the businesses to be interconnected and just keep traffic on the road and less conflicts on the road.
That just makes so much sense because we used to see a shopping center here and here and you had to go out.
You had to go out and right.
You had to go into the traffic to get around it.
It's so dangerous.
Yes, I agree.
And it helps both businesses generally.
I think it does too.
Now, this, you coordinate with those two businesses at this point, your Jason?
We haven't coordinated with them per se, but to the east, it lines up perfectly with their driveway. So, you know, it's already there and we're there. We'll go to each other's properties. To the, to the west is a flower box and they actually have parking right there right now. But the DOT recognizes there may be an occasion where that flower box will redevelop in the future. And at that point, because we have that interconnect, the DOT will know when they go for new access connection and when the city's looking at the site plan too, they feel it, you know, it's a pretty, pretty good chance that flower box will, they will tell the flower box the same thing or whatever development that is, connect here to that interconnection point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I have one more question. You mentioned before, before I asked the question, your company, you have a division that you have traffic engineers, correct? Where you study traffic patterns and all?
Yes, we are.
Okay, that's good. You mentioned possibly maybe in the future, doing parking on 60 there where you were making reference to. So you think that's a doable idea then?
You know, I think from an engineering perspective it is, but I think it's a political will of the city and bureaucrats in Tallahassee.
Looking for the engineer's statement. Okay. Thank you. That's fine.
Joe, you're not calling any witnesses, are you?
No.
Okay.
I just have one comment for Joe. From a I perspective, your Plan A looks more appealing to the downtown area.
With the multiple windows?
The multiple windows. Plan B, to me, looks like it would be more of like a mall, movie theater building than a downtown building.
Yeah.
I think Plan A would go with the courthouse and all the other buildings that are down there. It's just my thought. That's all.
It may have something to do with wind load and what it costs to.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
It's now anybody from the public who would like to speak on this particular issue, if you can come forward. Would you raise your hand if you're going to speak on this issue, please? Seeing none, then we don't have to worry about that too much, okay? We're opening public comment. No, I'm closing public comment on this, okay? Closing arguments by applicant. Anything else, Sherry?
No, we do not have anything else. Thank you.
And by the applicant, okay? Discussion on board?
My questions have been answered very nicely. Thank you.
I think we're ready for a motion then. Do I hear a motion?
I will move. Oh, go ahead, Don. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I will move that we accept this with the five conditions established by staff.
With the conditions, good.
With the five conditions.
I will second that.
Want to call the vote?
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellman?
Yes.
Mr. Crotto?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Good luck.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is also a quasi judicial item and it's a site plan application submitted by Lee Eaton to construct an 1,820 square foot outdoor tiki bar at 3,500 Ocean Drive, Vera Beach Hotel and Spa. And the number on that one is SP1500013. Exparte, okay. Is anybody in the, on the board here have any exparte communication?
I do not.
No.
Okay. And swearing in of all the applicants then?
If anybody's going to speak, if you'll please stand and raise your right hand.
If you're going to speak on this, please stand and raise your hand.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you God? Thank you.
Sherry, do you want to make the presentation?
No, you've got me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The site plan application before you proposes to construct an 1,820 square foot outdoor tiki bar and wood frame dune crossover. In Exhibit 1, a project description fact sheet includes the general background on that. Basically, the project will involve removing an existing gazebo and other minor structures and replacement of the existing pavers with sand set, shell stone pavers, and the construction of a 28 feet high tiki bar. On the, you can see I've showed up in Exhibit 1, it's on the southeastern corner of the property, that location of the tiki bar. And if you're familiar with the property, I just give you, it's pretty, the property itself is Zone C1A. To the north of the property is also C1A and that's the spires, the high-rise spires. Across the street is RM1012. They're basically business and offices across the street from it. Obviously, to the east is the Atlantic Ocean and to the south is the Reef Ocean Resort Timeshare Hotel.
Tim, across the street from it, isn't there a new construction across the street also from that?
Well, yes, I think on the corner of Date Palm, there's some construction. There's, I believe some town, is that, am I correct? I think that's where.
Yeah, I think that's correct also. Okay.
Yeah, I was just citing the offices right across the street. But you're right, I think kitty corner up there.
And next door, the spires, they're what again, are what?
They're, they're, they're C1A.
The spires are C1A?
Yeah, there's two, two parcels, one C1A, the other's RM13. I don't ask questions about these.
That's an existing.
Basically.
No.
Basically, this, this project is before you because as our ordinance requires, anything that's, that has proposing more than 1,000 square feet of outdoor dining area must come before you all for approval. And since this is covered area, it would be considered outdoor dining normally. If outdoor dining just has umbrellas and all that, which they have out there already, it doesn't come before you. And also the outdoor dining triggers, the requirement triggers, there's a parking requirements also in that, which the typical umbrellas and all that don't have a parking requirement tied to it.
Because they put a roof over top of it?
Yes, since they're putting a roof over it, they're going to have to go through, they're going through this process. The site plan requires the planning zoning board to approve this and it's required that the plan meet all pertinent general review, performance and development standards. The staff finds that it does that, but I would like to go through in a detailed discussion because there are some points here that I'm sure will come up in the hearing, so we can discuss that. The first has to do with the parking standards. In your exhibit, the staff did a calculation of required parking that was required. And I believe that's the second, on page three of your exhibit, it looks at parking requirements for the proposed tiki hut. That shows how many parking spaces are required. And basically, it comes out to 145 parking spaces. The available parking on site, the applicant has 148 spaces, so we're three over. Now, this includes nine spaces along Ocean Drive. As you recall, when we changed our ordinance, we allowed frontage, public spaces also be credited on site. Now, the one thing different about this project than others is that this is all valet parking on the site. Individuals come on the site, they pull up and they're asked where they're going to go and they're taking their car. It's a 24/7 valet parking system. Any of the various enterprises in that, they will take your car in valet parking, whether it's to the spa, whether it's to the Cobalt, whether it's to be a hotel guest, it's taken care of. So basically, it allows the applicant to increase the amount of parking on site to take care of it because you don't have the public driving their cars around. And that's pretty clear when you, when you look at it. We did look at some of the parking spaces. If you really get into detail on that, and I can't really show it up here, but it's much at the scale, but there were parking spaces. Some of the parallel did not meet our code. Some of the aisles did not meet the code. But both the assistant engineer and I looked at this and our feeling is that since you've got 24/7 valet parking, you've got employees out there, they can move cars around all the time on that. So it's not as like public trying to pull out, back out and they can't get their car out in a, in a space. So it's a, it's a lot of economy of space and efficient, a very efficient use of space here. And as the planning director, I'm allowed to give that kind of modifications, which we felt comfortable doing. Although it's not required by the code, obviously there have been concerns about parking in Ocean Drive and Cardinal Drive area, you know, and so the staff requested the applicant explain the hotel's policy regarding the parking employees. That has been a big issue that's come up. And basically, there's a letter been provided by the general manager on January 25. It's in your file. It basically states that it's the hotel's policy that employees must park offsite. And basically, they must use the shuttle if they're during the AM to 6:00 PM shifts on the property. And if they don't use the shuttle, they could end up being terminated. And that's in the letter by the applicant. They also just point out that the applicant has also provided money for that, the Goldline Shuttle Service, which the $40,000. And one of the concerns we had was that if the shuttle were to be terminated for whatever reason, that the applicant would come back to us. Now, if you understand, this is not, this is beyond what the code is requiring right now. So what the applicant has proffered here is more than you, the typical property owner in, in that area trying.
Say that again to me.
Well, what I'm saying is they meet all the parking requirements.
So this project meets the parking requirement?
Yes, it meets the parking, but they've gone above that. They understand the issues in the downtown and the applicant's here, so you can talk to them. But they understand the parking situation. They're trying to alleviate, that's one reason they put the $40,000 into it.
Is that why the valet parking is an addition? We consider that an addition too because it accentuates their parking.
They would, if they didn't have valet parking, they couldn't meet the parking requirements. That's pretty clear.
Okay.
My question.
Just because of the.
On the parking requirements?
Yes, sir.
Do we calculate the parking required for a facility? Do we include the people that would be working at a facility as well as the people who?
No, the parking is done by our parking ratios, which, which takes into account employees. That doesn't mean you might not have more employ, you know what I'm saying?
I'm saying, but it does take into consideration that employees, so our parking requirements assumes that employees will be parking on site.
Well, no, not necessarily. There's no requirement, but it takes into account the required parking, correct.
Takes into that into account.
Sorry, Mike, I got him.
No, that's all right. That's all right. Okay. So we do find, as I pointed out, we do find that this, the parking is compliant with all the conditions of the code. The one thing that we were, we wanted to put a limitation on the valet parking, the concern we have, because it's happened before, would be valet parking would be done offsite. We don't want it really being done offsite unless we approve it. Well, you have neighborhoods there. We've had events, not at this hotel, where people have taken valet parking and parked in the residential neighborhoods. That isn't the intent here. So they, we've added an additional condition, which we will at the end to just take care of. They haven't done that. I'm just saying we have that in there. We're trying to protect the neighborhood. The loading spaces, one of the unique things of this thing, and as I point out in my staff report, they're required because of the size of the building, which is, I think, 70,000 square feet to have seven loading spaces. But back when they were originally approved in, in 2000. But back when they were originally approved in, in 2003, the planning and zoning board gave them authority to basically use loading spaces either for parking or loading spaces. Why they did that, I don't know, but it's been done, it's been done all these years. Staff would say that there's been governmental approval, you know, to go back 13 years is ridiculous. But the thing that is the saving grace here, it is valet parking. So that means if you're going to come in for loading and all that, they're going to move cars around if they need to have loading, it'll take care of that issue. So I do not see that as a major problem. Would I approve something like that or recommend that? No. But, you know, we have to go by, you know, government, they, they made their investment, they followed the rules, and we, and we just need to go by that. So we find that being, the, the loading spaces are compliant. Road concurrence was not an issue, we, they did a, a brief, they had a traffic engineer look at it, but basically, they were play, it's really not really adding anything more to the site because they already have outdoor dining and service out there. This is just putting a cover on it, so that did not come into play. So we found that compliant. The floodplain regulation's a little more difficult because this is probably the first time since I've been here that we've actually had an outdoor accessory use outside pools and stuff at residential with a cover on it inside a, the V-zone, which is the high-velocity zone. And as I point out, they're in the 16 V-zone, which means you have to have a foot and a half above that normally if you have habitable space. But having, not having enclosed walls perimeter around it doesn't require that they have to meet that. Now, they do have to meet certain things, clearly, and we point that out, and you see when the conditions, you can't get any floodwater into the sewer system, you got to go into the drain, that's all has to be taken care of. But when you get into some of the mechanical equipment under there, say like a refrigerator and all that, the code, our code nor the, the model ordinance doesn't require that that's above base flood, because they're going to be at about 15.7 or something where they're, where the bottom floor of this place would be. So I've put a condition in there, I'm going to work with the applicant, see if we can try to protect the thing, but there's no, it's more of a, it's more a FEMA guidance, it's not in the regulations to do that. And I didn't want to, we can get in a long discussion of those kind of things, but I think they're, they're very cognizant of that, and they want to, you know, certainly lighten their insurance bills when the time comes. So we find that the site plan's compliant with our floodplain regulations, turtle lighting, they're going to have, I believe, three turtle lights. That's the only really lighting that's being added under, except under the roof, and that will have to meet the turtle lighting requirements, and that'll be done during the building permitting process. They also have to meet compliance with the performance design standards, and that deals with the layout of the driveway and parking loading areas, it really is the pedestrian paths. Since there really wasn't anything being added here, we took a look at, as I said, all the traffic will be going through the U-turnaround, there won't be any public traffic going anywhere else through the thing, this will all be handled by valet. It certainly decreases the opportunities for the pedestrians to conflict with vehicle travel, and just the pedestrians aren't going to be going from their cars deep in the, you know, in the parking areas of that. So we find that in compliance too. The proposed arrangement of the buildings and parking will not result in unreasonable and disruptive impacts on adjacent properties. And here's, here's an area that we're clearly a little concerned about as it came out. Next, and particularly, and we, I'm sure we have a lot of people here to talk about it, next to the property is the Reef Ocean Resort, and they are very close to the property. So concern would be that be some possible noise impacts from outdoor activities at this, at the, at this. And as active, as we point out, the existing two-story building on, on the next, the adjacent property is only going to be 25 feet away from the actual tiki bar rooftop. So there's a, there's a little concern about that particular noise, outdoor noise, where it'd go beyond 10, 10:00 AM or 10:00 PM in the evening. But one thing I think I need to point out, they are also commercial zone, they're, they are a hotel. This isn't a residential neighborhood, so when you buy into that, you have to accept some of the, the kind of disruption that normally goes with a commercial activity. So that has to be, you know, you weigh into that, but that doesn't mean you should totally disrupt the next-door neighbors. Obviously, the applicant has had to look at that, they did that freely when I discussed it with them. So to do that, the applicant is also a proffer, they're, they're going to have no outside noise to be allowed after 10:00, 10:00 PM at night. And they also explained to me that they've been doing outdoor music for a long time. Now, it's usually been the daytime, they haven't been doing anything at night. And I do point out the, the section of the code that deals with that. I mean, we get into an area here, but I believe that would take care of that problem. To further provide the noise attenuation, the applicant proposes a 65-foot linear landscape hedge, which would be, I'm requiring that it be, it didn't state it, at least six feet high along there, which would make it about eight, six feet, about seven and a half or eight feet above the, the ground level of the, of the property next door. And I'm going to require that they get approval from the planning director on the exact specifications for this, with the understanding that we want, the, one, the plant has to be salt and wind tolerant, and the plants used have to have a dense branching, which diffuses the noise, and does, there are other, other ways, if you look at landscaping design standards on that, which we think will help lessen any impacts of that. So we find that the site plan meets its performance standard with the conditions I've outlined. There's compliance with development standards, I think Sherri talked about those, but none of those are really involved with this, this project, so we did not address those. So based on the above analysis and findings, the staff finds the proposed site plan meets the provisions for site plan approval, recommends approval subject to following conditions. I'm just going to, number three goes through the whole list of FEMA or the floodplain restrictions. Those are atypical of which you would see, but I've kind of pointed out what they would be. And let's see, the one thing is other in D, under 3D, there'd be no walls or panels. Once you start enclosing, then we're in a different thing altogether, and they can't do any of that without our approval. And we also need inspection by water and sewer in the planning department, ensure the plans to the above conditions for the floodplain prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy or certificate of completion. Number four deals with the landscaping, and I go through that the hedge material height has to be, how it has to obscure the view from a person staying on the property next door, it should do that. And the specifications have to be approved by the planning director. We also are going to have to do an inspection once that's installed prior to CO and certificate of completion. Number five is the one that they proffered about meeting with the planning development department, should, within 60 days, the termination of the shuttle, that they would come and discuss accommodating employee parking. As I said, this is above and beyond what the code requires, we've added that. The only thing I would like to add, number five, it says termination of the GoLine, should add the word shuttle to that, we don't mean the whole GoLine service, but shuttle. All right. Number six is the, that there wouldn't be any, no devices for the producing or amplifying sound should be operated outdoors in the property, including the tiki bar between 10:00 and 7:00 AM. And then the last thing is on the valet parking, it'll all be done onsite, unless they get explicit approval to do some off-site, maybe for an event or something somewhere else. So unless you have some questions to me?
I do have just one on the GoLine. When I first read this, I said, "GoLine is shutting down?" No, 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 that's...
No, no, no.
Could we just add a word there, something to the effect of, "Should the GoLine shuttle be terminated?"
Well, that's what I had, the termination of the GoLine shuttle, I had that word. If you put termination of the GoLine edge, the word shuttle, is that good enough?
You added shuttle, I'm just saying, could you indicate that it's not being shut down, but it might shut down?
Oh, I see.
If it should be.
Should, should it be?
Yeah, I'll put that in there, that's fine.
It just looked like, "Oh, it's being shut down."
I'm a little concerned about that point, number five, it seems a little weak. All you're doing is saying, they're saying they're going to come talk to you about it. It doesn't commit any change, you know, we would, may end up if the GoLine does get, that does get canceled, it would seem to me we'd be better off to be, have some requirement that we, that they agree to a plan, that, that we, whatever is developed.
Well, the only...
Discussing it is not...
No, no, the only reason I didn't do that is, one, this is over and above, beyond the code. If they wanted to proffer something like that, that's fine. I felt that this would be a, a discussion thing that we could look at alternatives that are not on the table, rather than here at this point in time trying to fix to a, to an action that we don't have. That's why we didn't make it any stronger than we did.
I understand that, but, you know, I, I look at it where our parking requirements provide for employee parking to, to have an organization demand that none of their employees ever park onsite, makes, exacerbates our program.
No, that doesn't, hey, I can tell you, most of the hotels do that. It's done in all the hotels.
Well, that's a problem.
Yeah, well, but no, but the parking is taken in, is taken into consideration. Employee parking is taken, when you do the, the parking standards, the problem is, is when you get very successful businesses going on, you do have some issues with that.
They already paid the price once for that deal with their application way back.
I think with that being said, too...
It was supposed to include employee parking in the standards, that's what I'm saying.
With these parking issues, since things are being redeveloped, you're going to have more need for parking. Right now, the shuttle service is set up to take the additional folk, employees, what have you, to our parks. The other thing I want everybody to bear in mind is, as we're rolling out into the future with the way our parking's set up, are you going to put all the parking into the parks? And then we'll have a problem with that later on down the road. Our park system was not set up to be like parking garages, it's working right now.
That's right.
Okay? It's working now the way they have it set up because they really didn't have any alternatives, they had to do something over there.
Well, what I'm saying is, a mistake was made to allow businesses to have their employees park off-site and not require...
No, there's no mistake done, I'm sorry, Sherri, I, I'm just telling you that when we did the code...
Maybe bad choice mistake, saying it was, it was, didn't look ahead as to what the issue...
Well, no, it, it does take into it, it's where you get these larger hotels, and it could be that our, our parking requirements for those should be a, a little greater. But you got to also recall, we were trying not to create a lot of parking lots, you're in a pedestrian area, so there was this balancing act. And you know what? Sometimes you have to keep working on it and make changes. Nothing's set in granted on these things, and it's, sometimes it's trial and error on this, this kind of thing. But I can tell you, almost all of them don't allow their employees to park onsite. That's, that's part of what's going on.
I understand.
Yeah.
And that, and I think that's, you know, one of the problems we have, it's, it's one of the nuts we have to, you know...
But what I'm, the also saying, you can't take out that problem on the site plane coming in, that's all I'm saying.
I'm just raising...
But it's good to raise the issue. I agree with you.
Raising the issue, and I want to, you know, lay out a concern that I have going forward, that we need to think about requiring businesses in the future as much as possible to be responsible for their employees. And I, and this one does, they, they contribute toward the shuttle, I understand that, and that's a very positive thing on their, on their part to do that. The, and I do notice that this proposal says the existing parking is 138, and the proposed is 148, so this proposal would add 10 parking spaces to the...
Yeah, they've added, yeah, they, they've made some changes internally on that to, to make that, right.
In other words, that they've made the parking places smaller, so because it's all valet?
Well, some of, some of are a little smaller, but we didn't have a problem with that because it's all going to be done by valet.
Okay, so that basically, they reconfigured their site to have smaller spaces, and they're going to fit in by...
Well, a couple, some of the spaces they did, I did, I think they took into some parallel spaces along where you go in the loop into the, the hotel.
Yeah, because I know it's one of the spaces that they have, which is on the street, only about a third of the space is really of, of, with their property, so I was wondering how that one was counted as one of theirs.
The other thing I like in number five, if, if the parking situation does not work, because with valet parking, everyone knows with valet parking, there's a fee involved usually, even though it's not on the books, it's appropriate to do the tipping, when you get, you may have a lot of visitors coming in the future, and this is something we all have to think about, they just don't want to pay for that valet parking. Not that it's a fee that the company will put on there and people will try to park somewhere else. So the busier we get over on the island side, this is something we're going to have to think about. Not everyone's going to use valet parking, even though that's part of this plan.
Yeah, and the fee, it is, it's, it's free, the valet parking's free, obviously, most people are going to tip the valet.
It's a tip, he's talking about.
Yeah.
I do have another question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Tim, I'm noticing on the overall site plan, it references beach vegetation does not exist, and they're going to be doing the dune crossover. How does this work with the turtle ordinance and the lighting?
No, it's all done, they, they get the turtle, in my understanding, they probably aren't going to do the crossover right away. That was, that was on the site plan, they, so if they don't do it, it'll fall off, but yeah, that's all taken care of, they got three...
And the lighting on the tiki bar will...
Right.
Will not shine down toward the beach.
No, no.
They have met all the criteria for the lighting for the turtles?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a...
And they'll have a final when they do, they, when they do it, the billing department will do a final check on it. I mean, we're, our code enforcement people are very, during turtle season, they're out there.
And we have a very strict turtle ordinance that was approved by the state.
Yeah.
It's an excellent ordinance.
Great, okay, thank you.
More questions? Norm, you okay? Linda? Okay. You okay, Joe?
I have a question about the street access to the new tiki bar. How will that take place?
There is no, I mean, the access is not changing.
Okay, so it will come through the hotel.
To the hotel to get to the bar, just like going to Cobalt or one of the other.
All right. And that, and that meets all the, the safety requirements for...
Yes.
Whatever hazard might develop?
Right.
Access?
Right. No, this was reviewed by a fire and prevention service, there was no issue.
The, the, sorry, Joe.
My other question would be about the construction phase. What kind of controls will be in place for construction vehicles, and, and how will that whole process work? Will that be coming through the lobby of the hotel? Will that be accessed off the street, up the side of the property?
I think you would need to talk to the applicant on those specifics, I'd hate to...
All right.
All right.
The existing, is there any existing vegetation right now between the two properties on the south side? What is there now, do we know?
I'd have to look.
No, there's, can the people living in the condominium south, can they see the umbrellas and things presently, or are they, are they buffered by something?
No, no, they can see them.
They can see them now, so they don't have a buffer presently?
No, this would be, this would be a vegetative buffer that they don't have.
This, this facility would be much taller than the umbrella.
Yes, it would be, very true.
It's 26 feet, I think.
It'd be 26 feet up instead of 10.
Yeah, that's exactly right, plus a foot and a half above them already, so it'll, it'll be tall.
Right.
And it's 25 feet away.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that, what is, is, within this particular zoning area, is that the minimum requirement, they've met the minimums that's required for setbacks on that side?
Yes, they, they meet that, there's really no setbacks on these accessories in that district. It's got a, I mean, that's in the C1A zoning.
So it actually could have been closer, is that my understanding?
It could have been closer, yeah.
Typically, okay.
Well, no, it's, it's back, it has to go back because of the height.
Okay, so it's right...
There's a modification, yeah. If it had been a principal building, then we get into the overlay district where there are other changes. I mean, it's a, it's a mixed type thing, but in this case, it meets the code.
If there's no other question, we'll bring the applicant forward.
That's Peggy, put that on the table.
Have you been sworn in, please give us your name, and if you've been sworn in or
not, please.
Yes, I have, Lee Heaton.
Okay.
How are you?
Fine.
Can I get your name, please?
He did say...
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Lee Heaton.
He was quiet.
Lee Heaton, is that better? I'm not sure where to start, I guess maybe just talk about some of these questions you've had?
If you would.
Okay, and if you have any...
Whatever you'd like.
Specific questions to me. One, I think it's important to note that there's already dining happening there, we're just covering it. And this is an open-air building, so you'll see right through it, it's just to cover the, the dining that's currently there. Number two is that it's primarily for hotel guests, although we do have some people that come off the street, the lion's share of these people are hotel guests. And this just gives them another venue. Instead of sitting out in the open air, they can be covered by the rain, or, you know, we can shield it in the wintertime by the wind, because it's very cold out there in the wintertime to dine. Let's see, parking, valet parking, we do require valet parking on site. Nobody's allowed to park their own car 24 hours, seven days a week. The bus, we did assist in the funding of the bus. We do realize there's a parking problem on the beach, and we're happy to continue helping to assist funding of the bus. Noise, we did agree with staff that after 10:00 PM, you must have a code for noise. We're happy to abide by the code. We don't, we've never had a noise complaint there currently, that I'm aware of anyway, by any neighbor. The only noise complaint we've ever had is by a guest internally, that might have had their door open or something while they were sleeping. But generally speaking, there's currently a bar there, we're currently doing business there, this isn't anything new, we're just covering it. Let's see, as far as the hedge goes, yes, there's a small hedge there. The neighbor can see into it, into our property. It's a, I think it's just a small seagrass hedge. Talked with your staff, and we proposed a taller hedge, maybe Calusa, it's a type of hedge, maybe five, six feet tall, which would be more of a, you know, a thicker hedge that's salt tolerant. I think, I think that was it for your questions.
Mr. Heaton?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
A question about the construction phase. Considering Ocean Drive, its traffic problems and its parking problems, will construction vehicles and supply vehicles be parked in those parking places on Ocean Drive? Or will you have offsite someplace to accommodate them?
Procter Construction will be doing the construction. They built the hotel as well, and they'll be overseeing, they'll be the general contractor for this construction. We haven't gotten there yet to understand where those vehicles will park. I can tell you, this is fairly limited. I mean, there's already pavers there, sandset pavers. These pavers would be removed, so there's debris that needs to go away. There's a tiki structure that's there. By the way, this isn't a tiki like a grass hut. This is a, you know, it says tiki bar, but it's a, it's a building that's similar to the building that's there. It's just, I don't know why it was called a tiki bar, but the, the pavers would need to be removed, and then there's, this is really a simple, open-air building. No, no air conditioning units, no ductwork, no drywall. These are beams that are, that are manufactured offsite, similar to the building that's there. And those beams would be brought in and erected, and then the roof would be put on, and that's fairly as simple as it gets. There's not, this isn't like building a house, so as far as construction, it's fairly simple. How, where the vehicles parked, we haven't figured out yet, we haven't determined, and how many vehicles, I don't, I don't anticipate being too many, but that's really, Procter will have to coordinate that. And it will be done in the off-season.
I have a question on, I'm assuming that we're going to be hearing some concerns about noise and impacts, and I noticed that you're going to be providing no music after 10 o'clock. I'm just curious what you have on there now, for instance, at your pool. Do you keep your pool open after 10? Do you have music there?
Duncan, the manager could probably speak to that better, but yes, there's music there that plays during the day. I can attest to that for sure. And then certain, I think most Sundays, you have a live, there's a live band, maybe a steel drum guy or something, but there's some sort of music there during the day, I believe on Sundays. Again, I may be incorrect, but I'll let him speak.
But it's during the day?
Yes, ma'am. And sometimes there might be music at night, but usually that pool bar, again, we're catering to our hotel guests.
Yep, right.
And I think it currently closes, Duncan, do you know what time it closes? The pool bar, currently?
The pool bar closes around.
Please come to a microphone if you're going to speak. Now, have you been sworn in?
Yes, he was.
And give us your name again, please.
Duncan Clemmons.
Duncan, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the bar currently closes between 10 and 11, depending on the business, who's there. And just to let you know, we do have many rooms that overlook that area, so we're very cognizant of any noise, because obviously, we have our own guests to think about.
Can you get a little closer to the microphone, please?
Sir, could you speak into the mic?
Sorry.
Audience can't hear you.
Sorry. We do have, we do have a wing of our building where we have our own hotel guests who have an outlook onto the pool and the ocean, and so we're very cognizant of noise to make sure that the noise is kept at a minimum and not on too late. And in terms of the pool hours, the pool, obviously, we close the pool around 5, 6 o'clock. We don't prohibit guests if they want to have a quiet swim, but obviously, we don't want the pool in use later on in the evening to, once again, disturb guests who are in their room.
Thank you.
Okay.
I found out where the tiki bar reference came from. It was the applicant, signed by George Hinton.
Yeah.
And it also includes a dune crossover. Is that a new dune crossover, a rebuilding of an existing?
Part of our DEP permit was, was permitting an additional dune crossover, just in case we, we thought we might want it.
So this, this dune crossover would be basically right with this new construction of this.
We're not anticipating building it currently, and we don't think we will. We have a dune crossover.
Okay.
We don't think we need a new one, but it was part of our DEP permit, and it was permitted. We do have a DEP permit for this building and the dune crossover.
So if you wish to in the future, you'll already have your permit?
Well, the permits, I think only for 24 months or something.
Yeah, permits have a life.
Yeah, they have a life, so it's not, you know, we would have to build it if we chose to build it, but.
Yeah, but you basically have no intention of building it this time?
Not currently. We have one, and it's just, you know, 50 yards away or something.
Mm-hmm.
Additional questions?
I do. This tiki bar, is this in addition to what is already existing, a bar that's already existing there? Or is this to replace the existing bar that I see on the plans?
Well, it's to replace, it's, it's to replace what's there as far as the bar is concerned, and to cover the dining that's existing.
Okay. So the, the building that I'm looking at that says it's an existing covered outdoor bar, this building is going to replace that one?
Well, the, both buildings will be there.
Okay, so you'll have two bar areas then?
No.
Well, one bar area, but two buildings.
Yeah, let me initially, so I can clarify this, on the plan, say, we're going to expand the kitchen, that's where this kitchen bar area. And they're not doing it under this thing, so basically, this is not touching that at all.
All right, so the tiki will be the only area for dining and the bar at that point? The other one is just kitchen use?
Well, no, it's got a, it's got a dining, drinking area, it's got a bar too. It's, it's there already. They were just talking about making some improvements to it, but we've held that up, and it's not as part of the site plan approval.
Let me ask a question. The existing bar will remain as is, is that correct? And the lounge area around it? And the open area for dining right now, which is under, will become what I would call a pavilion, okay? As opposed to the word tiki bar, would be a pavilion for people to eat underneath that roof, but you're not going to, you're not going to serve drinks under that roof, and you're not going to have ice machines and etc. under that roof.
What happens today is, what happens today is that you would go under the existing building, and there's a bar under the existing building. And you might sit at that bar and order a drink at that bar. Or you might sit at the pool and have your drink and food. Or you might sit to the east, where the majority of our tables are for that dining establishment, is to the east, directly to the east, where we're proposing this building.
I'm familiar with it.
Okay, so, so that, that little structure that's out there would be removed. This new structure would be erected, and the, that bar that's under the current building would go away, and the bar would be out under the new building with, with the current tables. It would just be, you know, rearranged, if you will.
Okay, I think I understand that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
For Mr. Heaton. When you erect your structure, it will produce stormwater. What's your, what measurements are going to be put in place to handle the stormwater? And my follow-up question on that is, do you have the capacity on site to handle it on site?
I'm probably not the best person to answer that question, but we're going to.
No, there, the impervious surface area is not changing it really at all, so there is no, there is no real need other than to make sure it doesn't flow on the next property.
So to answer my question, you're erecting, the roof is being erected, so according to the planning director, the stormwater will be handled on site adequately? Because you now have a roof.
No, it's gone through the stormwater. You have to understand, the impervious surface is not changing because you put a roof. It may direct, and they, they looked at that.
So the engineers did look at that, where.
They did look at it.
So the, the stormwater that this roof will produce, it will be handled on site?
That's correct.
Okay. My next question from Mr. Heaton. You said that the construction will take place on the off-season? About what month do you think is the office season?
Well, we know we have, we know we have guests that come. It's going to disturb our guests more than anything in our business. So we want to get it done as quickly as possible and in the slowest time possible. So sometime leading up to November, July, August, September, we haven't determined that, but you know, sometime in the, in the summer months.
So if I'm.
August, September, October.
Hearing correctly, you would like to start soon and like to have it wrapped up by November, when season begins.
We would.
That's what your company's thinking. I have a suggestion for you in the event that this gets passed. When you work with your contractor, because you guys, I understand you, you own the property, it might be helpful, even though you're in your off-season, to make arrangements for what I call the regular workers that come on site, you're already paying for the shuttle, is shuttle, shuttle the workers in. And then number two, the folks that have to have the work trucks and whatnot, arrange where they should park. I think that would show the rest of the business there, you're a good neighbor, you wouldn't type the spots.
Well, I'm sure they, I'm sure Procter could shuttle them in as well.
Because they've had complaints, you've been here long enough to know, they've gotten complaints with construction traffic over there when, when construction takes place. It's a way to handle it. Like I said, you're already paying for the shuttle. And you have a lot of regular, what I call, regular workers that just come in their cars, and you can make arrangements, and the contractor, as you would know, needs to do that. I know you work with Procter quite a bit. Thanks.
Additional questions? Thank you.
Yeah, you know, it occurs to me, what I'm seeing here is a 15-foot setback from the side property line, is that correct?
It probably is close to being correct, yeah.
Are there some landscaping requirements that provide more of a sound barrier than others? Has that been part of our?
That's why I've got a condition that, well, I'm going to look at this, because there are recommended standards for landscaping. I mean, if you're going to use vegetation as a sound barrier, yes.
Yeah, I know they're effective. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I will open up to public comment. If you're wishing to comment on it, two things we try to, we try to alternate if you're for or against. If, if, if we have, how many people are in favor of this? Please, you raise your hand, that haven't spoken yet. And how many? One. And how many are against and remaining? Okay, so we'll start with the against first, so if you'd like to kind of arrange yourself if you'd like to, and you can comfortably get up there, and we'll listen to you speak. Sir, were you sworn in?
Yes, I have been.
Okay, and?
My name is Erv Roberts. I live at 1340 Jonathan Trails in Castaway 5. And I am president of the Board of Directors of the Reef Ocean Resort. We are the property, of course, immediately to the south. We're a 60-unit condominium, but we are not a transient condominium. We are deeded property. We have 3,060 owners, owners. We've been there for 37 years. Our people keep coming back and back and back again because they love it. I'm representing those 3,060 today. There's 800 of those that live in Florida, but we have them from all over the world. Since the announcement of the hearing, which we got about on the 4th of March, we went out to our owners and said, please respond. As a result of that, we have over 420 actual notifications of objection. We have 420 from our owners. This morning, we were pleasantly surprised when the spires delivered us 51 signatures of them also opposing the project. So between those two, we have a significant amount. We have several objections. First and foremost is the noise. The tiki bar starts at 15 feet back from the setback line. And our 100 building, which is an oceanfront building, is about 10 foot away from the property line, so the bar actually starts 25 foot, which I think was quoted earlier, 25 foot from, from our building. Our concerns are the noise, though we say that it's not much different, but to tell you the truth, it's a lot different. If you took a look at the documents and you add and subtract the numbers, we end up that there's about 20-plus difference in additional seating, additional seats. If you go to that drawing and the detail of it, and you count it, there are 72 seats at the bar. 72 seats. That's counting three six-top, six tabletop seats plus the bar people. 76 seats. In addition to that, there's another 46 that are within 150 feet of the setback line. So we're talking about 118 people that are sitting within 150 foot of the setback line. And we have property 25 feet away from that. As you know, a bar, as the activity increases, so does the noise level. And with that noise level, add the band music to it, and it becomes a significant issue. The bands play basically during the daytime, very seldom in the evening, very seldom to 10 o'clock. And now we are looking at letting them go till 10 o'clock at night. So the sound is a very, very big concern to us. It doesn't seem to me that the planned landscape is, is going to be able to, to reduce the sound that will be coming out of that complex. Our second issue is parking. Valet parking, free valet parking. Supposed to be free valet parking for everybody. In order to protect the property, we also are Bobby's landlord, by the way. To protect Bobby's parking and protect our own parking, we've put on two parking attendants to the rate of $30,000 a year it costs us. Three to four times every single day, there's an angry encounter of someone trying to park in our lot that's headed for an activity at the hotel. In addition to that, these are daily logs that we bake. People that drive in see the attendants and pull away or make some comment. So the parking issue is major, and valet isn't going to get it. I don't think the public's got the idea that it's free. They haven't got it. Our third issue is drainage. We talk about the fact that we currently are in a sand dune, and the rain comes down and it absorbs with the sand. We're now going to take a significant amount of that and, and cover it with stone pavers. Now, what happens to the water with that? The top of that stone is going to be 15.67 feet. Our property, our grade level to our 500 building, it's 15 feet away from that, that is 4.90, 1.29 feet difference. We're below what that grade level is where the top of those pavers are going to be. You combine, you run off of what's hitting the pavers plus what's coming off of the roof of that building 15 feet away from us, and we're very, very concerned with the issue of what happens to that drain water. We don't want to have our parking lot flooded, which is a little bit to the east, or a little bit to the west of where that building sits, and it slopes down towards the street. One other issue we picked up was the fact that the walk-in freezer being added. freezer being added. And a walk-in freezer is putting a rather large condenser to run that freezer, and it's sitting right on the 15-foot setback line, to go along with the pool equipment that is setting in the setback. And causing problems. And there is no plan for any suppression for any of that area, and has not been. So, those are our three major concerns. We have a few people here that came to voice their opinion. Would you please stand up, all you ree folks? Our owners come. They spend money. They buy groceries. They eat at restaurants. And they support the community. They keep our economy going. And we all depend on all the tourists, but we depend upon these owners also, as do the spires. So, we respectfully request that the proposal be rejected. I thank you for your time.
Any questions? Do we have questions, Herb? No questions.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
So, you have 3,000 residents?
3,060 units.
And you heard back from 420, which is less than 15% of your residents had a concern?
I'm sorry?
And you heard back from 420 out of 3,000, so basically, less than 15% of your residents had a concern?
23. We just started on the 4th of March. So, in that period of time, since the 4th of March, we've heard back from that many. And they come from all over the world, don't forget. So, we got them from everywhere.
I do have a question on the noise that you were talking about. We heard that there had never been a complaint about noise, except maybe something internally. And so, my question here is, don't we have an ordinance, on our noise ordinance, that when there's outdoor music, they're directed to play back onto the property, that the noise doesn't, to the best of their ability, go off property?
Well, we have a noise ordinance that I quoted in the agenda package that basically states that, you know, up to the period of 10:00 PM, you know, that's generally noise. After that, it's noise. If it affects a person of reasonable sensitivity, it could be a noise complaint, but that would have to be then confirmed by a code officer or a police officer, most likely.
Yeah. I just, you know, I'm going back to, you know, some situations we had some years back, where the noise was, the band was situated in such a way that the noise was going off property. And of course, then the river carried it. That was a particular problem.
And we try to do that when you look at site plans, if you have a band stand or something to...
Do you know if this is what's being done now? That the band is directing its music onto the property?
Well, I haven't really gotten the indication they're going to be having a band out there. The question is the outdoor amplified music. They haven't really talked about having a band, other than the steel.
Well, you know, I heard the complaint about noise and bands, and I'm just wondering...
Well, and the point I want to point out, no matter what you do today on this thing, if we start getting noise complaints, we always going to work with the applicants to do that. I mean, we've recommended going ahead with the shrubbery to do that, because that's one way to do it. It can look nice and all that. But there are also sound panels that are more expensive, that are hurricane resistant, that could go up if it had to. So, I mean, there are other options, but until this is... We believe this will work for this thing, particularly if we're not going to have a lot of outdoor music later at night. And it should also give that separation from the properties. I mean, that they don't have now.
So, what we're dealing with now is a bit of projection that this is going to be a problem, as opposed to being one now.
Well, we want to head it off. And you heard the people are concerned about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And our staff was sensitive, because it is pretty close to the property line. There is a building right there. And, you know, even though I pointed out that they're all in a commercial district, you know, you can... This isn't a single-family neighborhood or residential neighborhood.
Right.
But you still have to be cognizant of people's rights, you know, and try not to create impacts on them.
Be fair.
So, that's why they... You know, when we brought that up to them, they came forward with this proposal.
One of the... Herb, I would be thinking about myself, as I said, tried, if I was one of your homeowners in there. And I'm saying, the hotel, they don't want to disturb their own customers also. I think that's one of the benefits you'll have, is if their own patrons object to noise after hours. If I was staying at the hotel and I heard noise after 10 o'clock, I would choose another place eventually.
Well, we're going to be a lot closer than their people are, though.
I understand. But you've also chosen to build very close to your line. You actually said you're closer, you're 10 feet to your line, and they're 15 away from theirs. So, you see, I know that was done a while ago and things, but when we're commercial to commercial, it's when we were making noise across the river, we were going from commercial to residential.
Right.
And therefore, it's a different standard for us to work with. When we're working with commercial to commercial, there's different obligations, because you could... This could be reversed. You could be wanting to put in the tiki bar or at your restaurant there. And we would have to be answering the same question for the hotel.
Understand.
And it's a difficult... It's difficult. But I think both of you want the same thing, and I think of that as appropriate results for your timeshare residents and the hotel's guests.
Correct.
And we're trying to balance that to make it work for both parties. I think that's at least where I'm at right now, and I...
I just want to make it clear that these are owners. These aren't transient people that come and go. In the normal timeshare business now, everything goes by points. You don't actually own anywhere. You own points that allow you to go different places.
I understand.
But we're one of the old timers, and we're also one of the most well-respected resorts also, to tell you the truth, in Florida. We have tremendous background. As you see, we have tremendous backup, have a fantastic board that works, and we're considered one of the highlights of the older resort. That was built in 1967, was converted to a timeshare in '79, and we've been going ever since. And we're in great shape, both financially and support-wise.
Plus, I enjoy your restaurant.
And you do our community proud.
Great Bobby restaurant, yes.
I do have another question. You mentioned a concern about the drainage with the stone pavers, and that your property was below level. Now, do we have a way of mitigating that?
It's going to be... I've got the Assistant City Engineer here, Matt Metz. And Matt would like, will go up, and he'll respond to your comment.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
I have questions after the engineer's finished for the fellow that was just...
Thank you.
Oh, Jess, you'll have to swear in, man.
What do I need to do?
Right. I just need to swear you in.
Okay.
Just raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. Matthew Metz, I'm the Assistant City Engineer, and I reviewed the drainage elements of this plan. And the two things we look at primarily in drainage reviews is, one is, where's the runoff going? And the intent of that is to, when you build something, it doesn't negatively impact your neighbor, that runoff is moved to an improved facility. In the case for the Vero Beach Hotel, it's the ocean and the street. And then the other thing we look at is water quality. So, if a certain threshold is tripped for applications that come in, we make people start storing water on-site. The additions that were done with this tiki bar, I'll do water quality first, because it's a little easier to analyze, is we look at the impervious area they have on the site presently. Then we look at what they're increasing it by. And it fell under our threshold of 1,500 square feet. That means the net impervious area they're adding with the, what you want to call the structure, the outdoor bar, it's already over some existing area. And then there's a little bit of area that's currently grass or not pervious right now. So, that area they're increasing didn't trip a requirement to have more retention than they have now. And there is retention facilities on their site. The second issue of runoff, where it's going, there's a wall that divides their property and what they're building. They're not pushing anything over onto the property. Basically, the runoff is going to work how it does now. It's going to drain to the ocean or their on-site system.
So, it will not transfer to their property?
No.
Okay. And the amount of water, additional amount of runoff is not enough to make any difference in the calculations?
No, it's... I think we'd refer to as de minimis or minuscule.
Minuscule, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Does that answer anyone's questions?
Thank you very much.
Herb, were you coming? Have something else? As we have a number of other people want to speak.
I had a question.
So, I'm sorry. I forgot. Again.
Thank you, sir, for coming back up. And you said you're Bobby's landlord. You mentioned a walk-in cooler, a freezer. Where is that going to go again?
It's on the drawing, right down. It will be to the east, right along the property line. It's on the drawings.
Okay. Thank you. And you're concerned about the noise?
Yeah, we're concerned about the noise with that. And the pool equipment is sitting in the setback area. So, we've had problems with that, with discharges and water cleaners and all that. And we think those have been pretty much resolved. But that has also been a problem, because it falls, they pump it over the wall, and it flows into our parking lot. And got to paint the wall quite often.
But now, let me understand this correctly. You just mentioned the pool situation. Is it corrected now, or are you still having a problem with it?
We're okay right now.
You're okay right now. So, everything is good right now with your parking lot? You're not getting any extra water? And that problem has been eliminated, or problems?
Right.
Okay.
Periodically, it occurs, but right now, we're okay. But that equipment is sitting in the setback area.
It's sitting in the setback area. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
I don't...
When these problems occur, and you discuss them with the owner of this property, have they been willing to make the corrections necessary to correct the problem?
Eventually, it all gets corrected.
Eventually, in a timely manner, they resolve the problem.
Eventually, it gets corrected.
Eventually, okay.
Herb, I'd like to ask you a question. I have not been able to locate, nor my cohort here to my right. We haven't been able to find that freezer on our plan. Can you, if you have, can you point it either up to the drawing up there, or to one of us?
I see where existing pool equipment is.
Yeah, but that's existing.
Weren't they mentioned in conjunction with each other?
Yeah, he has a larger plan, that's why.
That's an existing building, though.
Well, what has that got to do with this? It's outside the... That isn't part of this problem.
We can't catch any of this on the record without...
What did we do wrong?
We're not picking any of this up.
We're not speaking into the microphone.
You got to use it.
It's in the existing building.
Well, the cooler's not part of this site.
It's not part of this discussion.
Not part of this, it's not part of the plan.
Yeah. I think they were looking at making changes when they were talking about the kitchen, and that's off the table.
Have they permitted to add the cooler?
They haven't done... Well, I don't know if they... They have not had approval for any changes over there, no. I'd have to look on the... Are you saying the cooler, was it permitted or not?
Okay, sir.
He has to go back to the mic.
We need to get this on the record, please.
You have to be at this microphone.
Herb, do you have any other comments?
No, that's all.
Okay.
We appreciate your time, and thank you, and...
How did we resolve that thing about the walk-in freezer?
No, I have to take a look at it. I don't know. It's not part of this site plan. If there's a problem there, we'll take care of it.
Okay, so it's nothing under consideration today?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next person would like to speak, please come forward. Have you been sworn in? And please give us your name. Okay.
My name is Jack Barrigan, and I live at 894 Island Club Square. That's up near Disney. I'm the treasurer. And let me tell you how I look at this. This building number 100 has roughly 300 people who own time there. I'm trying to figure out in my head, once they start figuring out that the noise is so bad that they want to get out of there, they want to sell their place, or, as we have in other situations, just drop paying their maintenance, and then we own it, and we have to somehow or other pay for it. I'm concerned about the money. Because with this going on next door, the people who are in building 100 are not going to be happy.
Hang on, Jack.
Yes.
I'm just curious, how much is the value of the unit for the weight?
Oh...
I'm just curious.
500. I mean, 5,000, yeah, roughly, each unit that's on the waterfront. Yeah. And another point, too. I know this. We currently are operating roughly around 8% of where we own the units. That's the best in Florida. So, toying with this is not a good idea. And I'm sure Bobby's not going to be happy either, because I'll raise his rent.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Hi, my name is Beverly Myers, and I believe you should have my written comments in front of you.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
And do you all have a copy of the yellow sheet?
We haven't had a chance to read it yet, though.
Okay, thank you. Most of what I have to say is in that, so I won't belabor it. My name is Beverly Myers. My primary residence is in Winter Park, and I'm a part-time resident of Vero Beach. My husband and I own a month at the Reef Ocean Resort, next door to the new tiki bar, which I understand will be 15 feet from the property line, 25 feet from building 100. And I'd like to explain why we are opposed to this project as it is. First, we are Vero Beach residents, seasonal residents. I live here for a month every year. I pay property taxes on that month to the city of Vero Beach every year. Like the other residents of Vero, we own our property. We respect our property and our beach. And we have a vested interest in maintaining what makes Vero Beach special, exactly the way it is. The quiet, peaceful enjoyment of a slower pace of life, where nature is treasured and protected. We are good stewards. Being at the reef enables us to join two different trade associations, where we could trade out and go literally anywhere in the world, because we own beachfront Florida property. Nobody does that. You see the same people year after year after year, because we're family. We've watched their children grow up. We've watched their children grow up, and now we're watching their grandchildren grow up. We are good stewards of our property and of Vero Beach and of our beach, and we do consider it our beach. Renters, I'm sorry to say, are not good stewards. The Vero Beach Hotel is not only filled with renters, people here wants to have a good time, but it itself has not been a good steward of their beach. Since their opening, their exterior lights around the pool have shone toward the beach every night. And when you call and complain and call and complain and call and complain, what you hear is, "Well, we can't dim those or turn those off or turn them around because of liability. Someone might get drunk and fall in the pool." So, let's really encourage people to get drunk and fall in the pool, shall we? With apparently no additional lighting needed for this new tiki bar. If the Vero Beach Inn is to have a tiki bar, move it away from us. It doesn't need to be at the far edge of their property. It can abut their building, as it should, and limit the noise and the impact, and still have their entertainment, but not be coming directly into our windows. And like most of Vero Beach, we're retirees. We might be up till 10:00, maybe. And when we go to bed, we crack our windows, because we want to go to bed to the sounds of the ocean, not the sounds of the rock band next door. Excuse me. You know, and this project is huge. And I don't know why they chose to shove it all the way to one edge of their property. They've got a good distance there, even actually on the beach, which I strongly disagree with, but further up toward their building. So, my neighbors are going to cover the impact on us, more than that. You have my written comments before you, so let me draw your attention to a few points. The beach lighting is already a problem. I have personally seen staff in the morning carrying tubs, bus tubs from the restaurant, of baby sea turtles. of baby sea turtles down to the ocean that they rescued from the swimming pool. And I've been told, but haven't seen, some were in the drain, they didn't make it. Well, I don't think a baby sea turtle's going to make it in a drain. This is a hotel, as I said, they're renters. They're new here. They don't know about sea turtle nesting. Many don't care. Many more won't care when they get a few cocktails in them. We don't need to invite people to come down and drink on the beach, play on the beach at night. We're not South Beach. We're not a spring break destination. We're Vero Beach, a major sea turtle nesting area, where we respect and take care of that area. We're a quiet retiree community. We don't need a party venue on the beach. This is a very, very active nesting area, and we ask that you leave it alone. Over the years, we've watched turtles lay eggs. We've watched turtles nest, break out of the nest and go to the sea. And if you've ever been privileged to witness a sea turtle who's giving, who makes that arduous trip up the beach, and then digs for ever with her flippers, with your flashlight with the red cellophane over it so you won't disturb her, it takes hours and hours and hours and hours for her to dig that nest, lay those eggs, cover that nest back up, and try and make the exhausted trip back to the ocean. And we don't need people partying on the beach. We don't need to set out a welcome mat to say, "Please, come drink and party on Vero Beach." We need quiet. And think about the precedent you're setting. If they can have a tiki bar on the beach, right on the beach, with music and lights till 10:00 p.m., encouraging people, of course, the ocean's right there. If you're young and having a cocktail, you're not going to walk down to the beach. You know, at our property, at dusk, every blackout, drape closes, everyone. If one doesn't, it's because it's a renter or someone who's fallen asleep. And security lets them know, "Close those drapes. We have sea turtles." When we go down to the beach, they make sure, "Do you have a red flashlight?" Because you can't disturb the sea turtles. We have many, many, many nests right outside our property on the beach, right outside their property on the beach. And we need to consider our environment and what we actually stand for. And finally, just for fun, last summer, I've seen sharks here before, but last summer, we got to watch Shark Fest 2015. Never seen anything like it in my life. The black spinner sharks coming so close to shore that you could just see a sea of fins, and actually watching them pursue prey so intently that they beached themselves and had to wait for the next wave to come in to riddle back out to the ocean. The black spinners are here because the sea turtles are here. We're overfishing the fish. The black spinners are here to eat the turtles. They're not going to be really, you know, picky about what's on their menu when they're pursuing prey like that.
Are we getting a little off-topic, though, right now?
Not really.
Please.
Because young people drinking at a bar on the beach at night are going to go down and play on the sand at night. Many of them are going to think a midnight dip is just the thing to do. Well, that's when sharks are out, they're more active. So let's have a couple of really good shark bites, something to rival that female lifeguard from 20 years back, which I remember very well, I've been here 28 years. I'm a second-younger trophy wife. My husband's been here 38 years. But, you know, we know we have sharks, we have shark bites. And we know they're closer than ever. We people don't need this, the sea turtles don't need this, the environment doesn't need And just keep in mind the door you're opening and the precedent you're setting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bev. Any questions? Next person, please, who would like to speak.
I have not been sworn in, but my name is John Anderson.
John.
And my wife and I bought down here in 1981, so we were...
Okay, sir, I'll need to swear you in. Okay? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
I had said my wife and I and family bought in 1981. Currently, my sons and I have five units, and we're, we talked today about buying a sixth unit. Yet, by direction, we only submitted an application for each of my sons. So three forms were submitted, yet we have six units. I met a family today that has six units, and they're sitting out here in the audience today. And to address the point that, well, you only had 400 out of some 6,000 units, or 15% is erroneous, and that's all I'm saying. In our case, it would be an increase of 50%. In this other case, going from one signature to six signatures is also erroneous. So the 15% is wrong. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, John.
I have, I have one question.
I'm sorry, John, would you come back up, then?
Sorry. When you refer to, over here, sir, right here.
Yes.
When you refer to owning six units, are you referring to six months, or six separate units, five of which you would rent out?
It's six weeks that my family and I use collectively.
Okay, thank you.
As I mentioned, the other family, they had told us today, they owned six, they're going to be down here for six, and they use the six.
Okay.
And I believe they're sitting out here in the audience today.
That's, that's fine.
They're there.
I was, did not understand, I wanted it clarified, if it was six different units itself that you might have rented out five.
Six weeks.
Six weeks.
That we use as a family.
Okay, thank you.
And we, but as I say, we submitted one form and not six forms.
Okay, thank you.
Next person, please. Come forward if you're going to speak. It's all right, sir, yes. I think you've been sworn in, is that correct?
No, my name is Charles Hancock, and I'm not been sworn in.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm an owner, week 23 and 24, number 101. This tiki bar's going to be 25 foot from my window. Plus, I'm owner of week 108, which is the one unit. And I think it's unfair to us, we've been here 14 years, it's on, like you said, we're owners, and we're not renters, and we do use our units. And I think it's unfair, like this man said, why can't they move that thing further away? Move it the other side of property, instead of putting on our family-oriented units. That's all I got to say. Unless somebody wants to buy my units, I'll sell them to you today.
Thank you, John. Charles. Next person, please. If you'd like to, you can actually come up here so we know, we'll let you automatically choose yourself, which is next, okay? Just come on around. Yes, ma'am, come on.
I have not been sworn in.
Okay.
My name is Teresa Williams, and I own two weeks of time share.
If you'll raise your right hand, you said you were not sworn in?
No.
Okay, you need to raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
I didn't really plan to come up here and say anything, but I've got two weeks at this timeshare. One of them is in that 100 building, and the other is right next to it with the beach front. And it took me a long time to get, you know, that package together. And, no offense against anybody or anything, but we're not kids sitting out here, okay? This really is, my sister and husband have been here like, I've been here 10 years, and they've been like 14 or anything. But when they first described it to me, and what I liked so much about it, was that it really is a family deal. It really is neighborhood, you come back. The owners come back for their weeks unless something happens. And we're quiet people, too, and generational. People buy units, they have kids, they grow up, they buy the unit next to them. You know, we've just got nests of, you know, families here. And it's quiet, and it's relaxing. And every year, I've been in the service, I've been all over from the Navy and stuff, but every year I can come here, and I can see, seeing sea turtles born is so much neater than you would think it is by watching National Geographic. It's just, it's wonderful, and different things. But I think, okay, this is the time that I just get to 100% relax. I tell myself I'm going on a boring vacation, because when it gets dark, everybody closes certain, you know, lights and things off. But going to sleep listening to the ocean is a, to me, just a wonderful experience. And the first thing I could think of was, I just got this unit, and I had two weeks in a row there, and, well, I got several years ago, of course. But the favorite thing is at night, listening to just waves coming up on the shore, or just sitting on the beach in the real dark, because you can see all the stars and things here, and just enjoying the peace of the water. And you don't build a bandstand if you're not going to have a band. And I just, I feel like my vacation's been spoiled, just by thinking about this. But that's all I have to say, I guess. I just, it's a quality of life thing to me.
Hi, ma'am. Any questions?
Mm-hmm.
Right now, the hotel spa has outdoor seating at night with, you know, in that same area. Has that been causing any problems?
You're speaking about...
What's there now?
No, it hasn't been. The lights have continued to be a problem.
Why is there a problem?
Ever since I moved here, I can't understand why they can't handle it.
Okay.
But if they can't handle that, and everything else is just, "We'll handle it, we'll handle it, we'll handle it," something as simple as turning your lights. I've also helped rescue the turtles out of the pool, because we went right up there instead of going out to sea, and that's coronated and...
Okay, so the outdoor dining area...
Nothing awesome about that, to me.
It's, ma'am, it's just the lighting, is what you're talking about, because of the sea turtles?
Well, I'm talking about, currently, it's the lighting that I find to be a problem.
Current, okay.
Should there be a bandstand out there with music, I would find that to be a great problem, because I like the quietness of it, which is why I'm here and not someplace else. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Next person, please.
I have a question. They keep raising this idea of a bandstand. I don't see any bandstand in this plan. Tim, could you comment on that?
There is no.
There is no plan at all to have a bandstand?
Ma'am, come forward. Whoever's next. Okay.
Hello, I'm Barbara Giuffrida. I've lived in Vero Beach since 1980.
Have you been sworn in, Barbara?
Oh, no, I haven't, sorry.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Barbara Giuffrida. I don't remember the year I bought my timeshare. I bought it probably, I don't want to lie, it was either little time after I moved to Vero. I lived inland, I had a sick husband, this is my second husband, my first passed, who had multiple sclerosis. We didn't have very much money. I was supporting my family as a teacher. I am now doing real estate for 29 years in Vero Beach, Florida, okay? We couldn't afford a vacation. We used to come over from inland and use the Reef Ocean Resort, and I, how I got it before I ever got in real estate, I called owners up who would sell it the cheapest. I guess I was supposed to go into real estate, because I called all of these different owners, and I got somebody that would sell to me for $650. And all I wanted was one week, so I could come over and tell the kids when they were little, "We're going to go and have a vacation." And we treat it like a vacation. We went to the ocean, we made believe we were on vacation. My children are all grown up, and I had grandchildren that used it and so forth. Okay, I didn't have the money to put a swimming pool in and all that stuff at the time, okay? What we loved about the Reef Ocean Resort, it was very quaint, quiet, peaceful, and I'm not against development, I know his dad, okay? But I do, even though I don't use it like that anymore, I go away on a trip, like going to the Grand Canyon in August, using the timeshare as a switching place. I do understand about the concerns. The parking situation, I brought a contract to somebody about two weeks ago that ironically was staying at the reef, my clients, and right below the one I own, which is in the 500 building, which I probably wouldn't have that issue. But that was one of the things that the reef was so great, it was peaceful. And I can only see what it would be like with the noise and so forth. Plus, if you read about sea turtles, I didn't wear my turtle, I'm a turtle advocate, they don't like noise. That, not only light, but noise disturbs the sea turtles. It confuses them. It does something about their hatching out and everything like that. That's what I'm more concerned about, is the environmental things. If it's possible to move that somewhere further away, less noise, and the parking situation is impossible. When I came over that evening to try to find a parking space, I asked one of the people there, "Can I park my car?" I got a tight one to go up and present the contract to the, the offer, I should say, to the people assigned, and it's a real situation. Now, if there, we have to have the guards there to chase the hotel people out of there, unfortunately, and if they get nasty, and that's not a good thing. I mean, this is one of the things my clients tell me, that buy in Vero Beach, that they love the quaintness. I'll have people to go across the state and come back and buy in Vero Beach. If we make it like someone said, "South Beach," it's going to lose the whole thing about Vero Beach. So I implore you, City Council, to really, really think about this. I only have one week, and like I said, I have tons of memories there. They don't need to have a tiki bar right up to the people in the 100 building. I really hope you do that. Not that you're going to ban them from having it, get it away from them, it does affect the sea turtles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. Next person, please.
I'm not going to take more than a minute. My name is Doreen Pinkerton, and I was sworn in in the beginning. I just wanted to say, I have been here since 1974 in Vero Beach, and I've always loved Vero Beach. And we bought our unit shortly after we got here, maybe it was 1979, '80, right when they first opened as a timeshare. And we are in the 300 building, upstairs above Bobby's. And we have one week in one unit, and another week in the next unit on a corner. And we have always enjoyed it. And I rented it out, my husband died quite a few years ago, 15 years ago. But I rented it out, and people were always wanting to come to Vero Beach, come back. Yeah, I had Canadians who were here a lot and rented from me for several years. And then I started really enjoying it myself, and I don't do that anymore about renting it. I, my son was here last week. We have the ninth and the 10th week, which is usually the last Saturday in February and the first Saturday in March. So one, one week at a time, or the whole two weeks, we enjoy it so much. And believe me, I would not like to be hearing music, and I don't care if it's a live band or if it's on a machine blowing the noise out, and they talk about shrubbery for the noise. We're talking about the beach. You know, there's only, I was in conservation for quite a while, there's only a few plants that can then grow in the sand on the beach. And you're not going to get a real sound barrier, I don't believe, out of those types of plants. And I think that's my main complaint or concern, except I want to say that I echo every one of these people who've come forward. I think all of these concerns are big in our minds as owners. Thank you.
Any questions?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm David Cedarholm. I live down in the Moorings, been here for more than 20 years.
Have you been sworn in, David?
Ah, yes, I have.
Okay, thank you.
And both of my children graduated from high school here, they're 32 and 30, and because of that, in the last five years, they've had occasion to come back and go to weddings. And on two occasions, they went to the wedding, they went to a very long wet reception and they went, they went to the tiki bar where they stayed for numerous hours. I went home and they called and came back to pick them up about 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock and they were still 30 or 40 of these young people there, most of whom had been drinking that whole time. And they all got in their cars and left. There was no supervision whatsoever as to how much alcohol was being served to these people and the bartender was interested in only one thing and that was selling as much booze as he could. And I, I think there's supposed to be some level of responsibility when you own a bar and you're open to almost midnight as to how many people have been served too much liquor.
David, any questions for David? Thank you, David.
Hi, I'm Ellie McElroy and I have been sworn in. I live at the Village Spires and I feel that we enjoy going over to Cobalt and to the hotel and it's been very pleasant and stuff. We hear a lot of weddings from where we are and that happens on a very frequent basis, but I've always felt that, that the hotel has been quite conscientious about being a good neighbor. I, I too have been quite concerned about this tiki bar going in and particularly for the reef themselves, but I, I keep hearing everybody today and it seems to me that there is a compromise possible and that's to put the tiki bar near the current building that's there and still be able to use their expanded space for their dining and keep people covered. There, there should be a good compromise here somewhere. I believe they're a conscientious neighbor and we just need to find the right plan.
I think one of the comments I can make back to you though is, we as a board only represent what's presented to us and our decisions made on what's presented. We cannot try to influence the other person unless there's, unless they're in some kind of a violation of one of the rules and that therefore we could make some other suggestions or not allow it. But right now, the compliance, they're in compliance and they have the right, just like you had the right to locate your unit on your property where you wanted to, they have the right to locate their unit on their property where they want to, so just so you're aware of that.
Thank you.
I haven't been sworn in, but my name is Frank Colb. No, I have not.
If you'll raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My name is Frank Colb and my wife is sitting over here, her name is Susan Colb. I own five weeks here in Vero, which is a beautiful community. The problem that I've been listening to here tonight or today is like a two-fold. We keep talking about dining, dining. One objective is if it's just dining, why are we moving a bar further towards the water? He already has a bar there now and it's covered, seats there to seat, dinner, if you want to have a snack or whatever it may be, they can do that. If they're interested in having a cupboard for their dinner, which is all fine, but I've yet to hear anybody say what time this place closes. Is it closed at 10 o'clock when the music stops or does it go to 2 o'clock in the morning? And the residents who are sleeping in the 100 building and of course, the 500 building and the other building right next door may not hear music, but when you open up an additional area for drinking, now let's look, be honest with folks, look at yourselves, put yourselves back 20 years ago, 30 years ago, when you have an area and if you're honest with yourself, you're going to say, I'm going to go over there and have a drink. Now that you're enlarging it, you're going to bring more people. More people brings parking. Where are they going to park? Are you going to park them and shove them over to the parks down here where they take their employees or are you going to park on the street or on the side street? Or are you going to park in the reef parking zone? You have valet parking. I guess some of yous have been there. It's kind of hard to put 150 cars in that spot, in that valet parking. I don't know, I've been around Florida, I'm, I come down here for nine weeks, I spend a little time south, similar place and it's tremendous problem with parking, but they have valet parking, have a big parking lot. Are we taking the park down a block here and going to park the cars in it or are you going to take the cars and park them over by Riverside here and then we get somebody who's had too much to drink walking over there? You've got to take into consideration that this is not only leading into a problem like one of the other speakers said, you're setting a precedence. If you're going to set a precedence, think about what's going to happen in the future, not today, not tomorrow morning, down the line, once they find out there's another place that's open at 2 o'clock in the morning to go drinking. Now, I, and the place next door is beautiful and I agree, it is a beautiful place. I've been in there myself, but I also been there around 9, 10 o'clock at night. Ain't too many people over there eating. I see a lot of people on the side having a glass of wine and everything and we're just nothing wrong with it, but the dinner factor is not the issue. I think the, the problem is here, parking and the extended bar hour that is going to cause a problem to everybody in this community here. Now, I wish I was a permanent resident here because I'd be screaming a little louder than I am now, but while I'm here for five weeks, I consider myself a permanent resident of this beautiful community. Now, this community don't need any bad publicity like you hear further south in some of the other communities which I've been in and you all hear it on TV. Some of the real wealthy communities in town here have these bars and outside the bar causes problems. And I don't want to call this a bar, I call it a lounge over here, it's a nice little place, but the fact is, keep in check, you're opening up the door for more cars to come parking here and not only that, it's going to start the residential area right around here, sooner or later, they're going to be there. Then you're going to have problems on top of that. So before you make a decision, think about what the outcome is going to be next year after this is all done and what's going to happen after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Next person, sir.
My name's Rick Miller and I have been sworn in. I've been a resident of Vero Beach since I was 24 years old. Something about this place as a 24-year-old, married father of one at the time, caused me to want to buy here. I would tell you that in the past few years, it seems like things are changing. I assume that's because folks like yourselves, past, folks like yourselves have allowed something to change. It's my understanding now that we can add two facilities using pavers, I hear this periodically and they're not permanent now, so we can add space that otherwise zoning wouldn't normally allow. We have a band that's been going every day, every night, just down the street from us. Up until a few years ago, that didn't happen. I have three generations of my family who own at the reef. Between us, we own roughly seven weeks. There are grandchildren, children, myself and grandparents, my grandparents that own here. We bought here for a reason. What I'm asking you is to consider what, what has this place always been and what's it been known as and what have you done that's kept it from being a Daytona Beach or some of these other places up and down because it's starting to turn that direction a little bit and there are so many things that are so positive about Vero that I've seen and I'm from northern Ohio, so I come a long way to be here and again, for 32 years. I didn't come here as a 24-year-old to go out and party and have the big nightlife and to have it continually coming down upon us from all directions when you walk out in the evening like I do or in the early morning like I do. It's, it's beautiful at our place. The stars, the Florida stars, you guys are used to it, you take it for granted, it's gorgeous. It's also quiet. You know, we don't see people coming in and out of the reef, but I can assure you, I see plenty of people coming in and out of other places. So all I'm saying to you is, you've done a great job somehow, some way of making this a great place. Don't let it turn into just a good one. Keep it great and part of that's got to be that you got to quit looking past what this gentleman said were two or three exceptions that he didn't see an issue with because they're doing something a certain way now. That doesn't mean they're always going to do something a certain way. That didn't mean that transportation's always going to be there. And when that changes, oh, we'll deal with it then. All right, well, they've, it's my understanding, taking parking spots that your code says are supposed to be X number of feet wide and now they're only like three foot less than they should be, but we're using valets to park them. So that's okay, so we can get a whole bunch more parking spots like that. Parking has always been an issue. We're spending 30 grand a year to keep their folks and other folks out of our parking lots and it happens every day. So you guys already know it, I've heard you talk about it, don't look past all that, okay? It only grows from here. This is the next place, then the next place down the beach, et cetera. Set a standard, stick to it and keep this place, like I said, a great place. Don't let it turn into just a good one. Thank you.
Rick, I may make a comment back there. The standards have been set, they're meeting the standards. So if, if I say that to you, you're meeting the standards and I still reject you, what kind of rule is that? The standards are set, you met the standards, but I reject you because I don't like the way you look or what you're doing or how you're doing it. I have the rules, you abide by them, so now I reject you.
Well, I would, I would say to you, Mr. Trump, sorry I had to do that. It's a great running joke, right? I heard exceptions to the standards and I heard that it's okay to have exceptions to the standards because your folks said, well, we're okay with it because of the way they're doing things. I heard about docks that because we're shuttling cars, those parking spaces that are in this dockage area can be used.
Valet parking was above and beyond what was necessary.
Right.
So they met the criteria without the valet parking. So this is in addition to, so they've already met the criteria.
Okay, valet parking as long as it's valet parking.
But they don't even have to do that, they could stop that tomorrow if they wanted.
There's my point.
But my point is they still comply with the rules.
It's complying with the rules to his satisfaction today. And if something changes...
To the code.
There's nothing, there's no code that says they have to valet park though, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're going above and beyond and I get that and we're still having people pulling in and out of our parking lot, including their employees, including...
Let me interject. Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah.
Valet parking allows them to have more parking space. If they did not have valet parking, they would not meet our standards.
The staff would have a problem.
They'd have more problems.
Okay.
You were right. You were wrong.
I just, I'm sorry, I want to interrupt. If I am, I've been wrong before too.
That's right, but, but the valet parking does allow them to have more parking to meet our standards, which is...
And correct and that's why we were allowed to give modifications and we do that routinely with other kind of parking. This isn't like we're treating them differently.
Correct me, Tim, so make my statement correct.
But you're basically saying that it's okay for them to park in the community park? No, they're, where's the community park guy to do? Where are they valet parking them? They're not in the residential area, right? That's one of the requirements. They can't park it anywhere else right now. What did I hear you talking about, about, about in the park earlier? I didn't, I don't recall the park.
The issue is they require their employees to park off-site.
At the shuttle.
And they require their employees to use the shuttle to go park in.
You know where the tennis courts area is in Riverside Park? That's where there's a designated area for the goal line shuttle over there.
That's where they drop them off.
Okay. For folks that ride the shuttle. Yes. And that could be...
And the employees...
And you have a business using it as a business parking lot. Every business, it's open to the public, anybody can park there and use that shuttle. Meant for the public. It's for the public and employees, but it was set up to deal with the employee parking. Again, so is the park next?
And did not the business contribute a substantial amount of money?
Well, this business did and, and that was it. This was worked out as an arrangement with many businesses working with the goal line to get this grants to do this and this is, you know, we've had an ongoing parking committees in that area to deal with these kind of issues. And let me just make sure I'm clear, they don't have adequate parking, so you allow that as an exception? No, no, no. They meet the code. Then why don't their employees park in their, in their, in their area? Because they, they wanted customers on that and that's how they did it, but there's nothing that says they're, they, that the park, as I explained earlier, most of hotels do not allow their employees to park there and some businesses won't allow their employees to park. The reef does. We have adequate parking. Well, that's really good to hear, but I'm just saying that our larger hotels don't do that. That should be a standard other businesses should be held to also.
You know, I...
Not using community parking as business parking.
I think what happens here is that you don't have the benefit of maybe being here year-round. The city has been very actively trying to resolve this parking problem, which we all recognize is terrible. And so some of the things that resulted from that really should be communicated better. You know, I see...
Well, I mean...
But the goal line now, the relationship, we have backup material here, which I think was available online and it's from the, the general manager at the Vero Beach Hotel and Spa and it very specifically says that the, they require all employees to park off-site, they're not permitted to park on property at any time, they're required to use the shuttle bus and I'm not going to read the whole letter, but, but it's here. And it's basically so that they cannot violate that. They can't use other parking spaces, they must use the goal line and they have contributed toward, toward that vast amount of money. So it's not like, you know, I, I see the hotel being very concerned about trying to keep this a place that's desirable for all of us. We're here because we love it, all of us are, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
And I see the hotel, they don't want to destroy what we have or they're not going to make their money, you know?
That may be true of everybody but our 100 building. You know, you, you mentioned, again, just back to the parking, you've allowed an exemption for them to have a different width of parking space than normal and it's supposed to accommodate their employees also. Well, you know what?
No.
Excuse me. They're supposed to have a certain number of parking spots inclusive of parking their employees on-site. Is that correct?
Specifically, the first letter, first sentence in this letter, "The Vero Beach Hotel and Spa requires all employees to park off-site, they are not permitted to park on property at any time."
Okay, but I think you're misunderstanding my question. So you have to have a certain number of parking spaces at their facility to accommodate whatever their square footage or however y'all's gauge that, correct?
Their guests and their employees.
Their guests and their employees, but yet we heard testimony earlier today that they basically have been granted an exemption, exemption to take a parking spot that's supposed to be this wide by code and make it this wide so we could add additional parking spots, plus we've been allowed to take parking spots in dock areas and because we have valet parking, we can still count those even though they're not supposed to be counted. Do you understand what I'm saying? There's, there's exceptions and there's going to be more exceptions and all the exceptions as we go are what cause the change in an area. It's what's causing your parking issue and it's not yesterday or today, it was 20 years ago.
But sir, it could be argued, it could be argued that by allowing the people to put more parking in there by, because they have a valet system, but to some extent, creating more parking space and alleviating the parking problem to some extent, which is why...
And that's true. The whole philosophy in the, in that area is try to use existing parking and not creating a lot of extra parking spaces.
Right, exactly.
So the, the city works actively trying to use businesses to allow to be parked, to be parking at the businesses when they need to and, you know, and off-hours and all that. So the idea is not to create big parking lots throughout the whole area, so it's a balancing act.
If I, if I go to Bobby's Restaurant to enjoy a dinner and I can't find a place in Bobby's parking lot, I park on the street. The same thing would occur at this hotel. If there's no valet parking to take them and munch those people and they're going to take a place on the street. So they're actually, all that valet is improving the situation and also making them tighter improves the situation because they can park more cars off the street in there because we're allowing them to bumper them up a little bit because they have all the keys and they can move them to get them out.
I hope that all works out and matters the parking situation, okay?
I wish it had a perfect solution. I'd put them all underground in a big garage.
But thank you and I appreciate being a resident down here, the number of weeks that we are and hopefully will continue to be.
Come back and stay back.
Thank you for loving Vero.
Hello, I'm Debbie Hughes, I'm the resort manager. I've not been sworn in. I've not been sworn in. I know it's long, but I've not been sworn in.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
My questions are actually mainly directed towards the applicant. How many employees do you have?
I think, does she, can she direct questions to the applicant? I guess so.
Well, you're not going to know it.
No, I'm not.
The applicant could come up and respond. Do you have a couple of questions for them?
I have, my three are basically directed to the applicant, but it's going to affect you. Okay, first of all, you asked a couple of the owners if they had complaint on noises. I'm the general manager, I do get complaints on noises for the existing bar that's currently there.
Okay.
Not a lot, and it is awesome that they do close typically around 10:00. The new Tiki Hut, I've heard that it's closing at 10:00. Will there be no alcohol or, because I need to answer to a lot of owners. Excuse me, I'm nervous. Will it close at 10:00?
One of the conditions that's put on this-
Will the bar be shut down at 10:00? Or will there be 150 people-
It's music, isn't it?
Musical shut at 10:00.
Televisions and music will have to be shut off at 10:00.
Very amplified, so.
So, television and music will, but 150 people 25 feet from my 100 building and talk until 2:00 a.m.? It is allowed to stay open until 2:00 a.m. So, I don't want to hear 10:00. There's no music at 10:00, but there's a lot of voices at 10:00, up until 2:00. So, I'm going to get phone calls, and I need to know who I'm going to call because I'm not going to like it. Again, the applicant.
Was there an answer to that?
Is it going to be open until 2:00?
Was there any answer to that question?
If there's going to be an answer, they'll need to come up to the microphone.
Once we get all the questions, then we can ask, rather than have, I'd get all the questions.
Okay, first question, is it going to be open until 2:00 a.m.? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
Bars can stay open until 2:00 a.m.
That's true.
Will this be one of them? 150 people, 25, would any one of you want to sleep 25 feet away from 150 people talking just like this, but it's a lot of voices, with alcohol, it'd be a lot louder, till 2:00 a.m.? The turtles, I know two summers in a row, dead turtles out. I don't buy the three extra lights for that turtle zoning, that's not cool. Employee parking, are they going to be terminated? Because at 8:00 in the morning, the whole strip, my side and the other side, is completely taken up with employees, brown uniforms going to work all day long. Shuttle ends at 6:00 p.m. Afternoon shift, I guarantee you have at least 300 employees, 150 more, or to 300 employees. They can't park anywhere else, they have to park on the street or on their property. There's no shuttle after 6:00. So, that's street. So, Bobby's, that's why you can't park on the street. Employees are there. Vero Beach Hotels, employees are there, not ours. We have parking. So, I just need to know, are you aware that dead turtles are on your pool? Are you aware of what time that will be closing, at night?
We'll ask the applicant to come forward, maybe he can enlighten the board.
Can I ask one question of this young lady? You have not ever received any complaints from Bobby's being open at 2:00 a.m. and the outside dining?
They close at 1:00, but we have a guard so that after 10:00, they're not allowed outside, they have to be inside.
But you've never heard of any complaints about the people drinking in the bar or eating at Bobby's for the reef?
Not inside because they're not allowed. They are, they close at 1:00, and they are not on the outside patio beyond midnight because our security guard, we pay for that.
Well, I've been there where they've been outside past 12:00 on the patio.
Correct. And our security guard is probably there, he hovers right there just to make sure the noise stays low. And you're talking, what, five people? Not 150?
Well, I know Bobby's has a lot more than five at that time.
But at midnight, at midnight, it's five people, and our security guard is standing there that we pay for to control the noise for our guests. I can't have any control over next door, outside phone calls.
Let's let the applicant come forward. I think we had three questions, basically.
Let's do it out.
Excuse me, let me put that away. Not sure where to start, but should I just answer these three questions?
Please, please.
Okay, one is how, how many employees do we have? I don't know the exact number, but there's probably a couple hundred.
Duncan said 150 per shift, which shuttle closes at 6:00, so where's the second 150 parked?
Would you speak into the microphone also, so we have you on record?
His resort manager, when we were talking about the parking, I was also on the committee, I was going to fork out $10,000 of our dollars just to handle their employees so we wouldn't have gridlock in our parking lot. Duncan was saying about 150 in the second afternoon shift where there is no shuttle for them. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, to the number of employees, I don't know the exact number, but there probably is a couple hundred. What they do in the afternoon shift, I don't know that, I don't control that. They're not permitted to park on-site, on-site. Do they park off-site? Yes, somewhere. Do they carpool? Yes, probably. Can they park in the street? They can, but they can be ticketed because they can only park there a certain amount of time. We don't permit them to walk outside, to my knowledge, and move their vehicle space to space to space so they can stay at work.
They swap, they swap every day, we watch them.
So, I'm not sure what the second question was. Turtles?
Well, first of all, most importantly to me-
Would you speak into the microphone again, please?
Most importantly to me, is my owners, I represent 3,000 owners, I care about them. How late is that bar going to be allowed to be open? 10:00 or 2:00?
Well, I think, from the city's perspective, I think we're allowed to be open as late as Bobby's is open. Do we stay open that late now? No. No, we don't. We close around 10:00 o'clock, and I don't think this would be any different. This is to, again, this is a facility for our guests, and some other outside people do come to the facility, but this is a facility for our guests, and it closes relatively early. Our guests aren't the Miami Beach people that I was talking about, and we don't have bands. If we do have a band, it's during the day, and it's not a five-piece band, it may be a steel drum band or something. And we do have music every day by the pool that plays on speakers.
Mr. Heaton, may I ask, would you be willing to proffer that you would close down that bar, that bar, the Tiki Bar at 10:00?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I'm just asking you if you would.
No, we can stop the noise. There hasn't been any complaints, at least that I'm aware of. You might get some, but we've never been called about a complaint, so, and then, well, you shouldn't. If there's a complaint, you should let us know. Turtles, yes, there was an issue with turtles at the hotel, and what we've done with the city is put up screening. So, during turtle season, we now have screening that's about three feet tall that covers our entire beachfront, so the turtles can't come in. There was an issue with turtles walking over. Our beach, when the re-nourishment was done, the new sand came right up to the top of the seawall, we put a new seawall in, and so the turtles could crawl up, but we've screened that off, so now they turn around and go back.
After fighting a little bit, after they figure out they can't get through that screen, I'm going to now go back to water, they're not going to make it because they get tired.
Okay. What was the other question?
Well, wait, do I have an answer on that closing? You're not, you're saying basically it could stay open till 2:00?
Yeah, I think it could.
Okay. So, what was the other one? And then you answered my question. And, big one, somewhere along the way, it's written that the employees would be terminated if they do not take the shuttle. Did I hear that correctly?
It's their policy.
Their policy.
If they can't park on-site, they are recommended to take the shuttle, which stops at 6:00. So, there's nothing being said about the 150 employees? Well, I can only say that there's 20, a good 20, 8:00 in the morning that's parking on the street. Nothing's being done about them, no hand slapped, outside, paying the ticket, the parking ticket. They're allowed to park on the street if they wanted to. They do not have to take their shuttle.
It's not my shuttle, no. They're not required to take the shuttle, but they're not allowed to park on-site.
Okay.
You said they were required to take the shuttle, they're required.
Well, they're required to take the shuttle or park, they're not allowed.
Excuse me, we're not going to have conversation, if you would like to come to the microphone, then you'll do that, otherwise.
But I think it did say that they're terminated if they, well, I guess it's terminated if they park on-site. Anyway, okay, we're not going, I'm not going to defeat a dead horse with that. And listen, I just want to say one thing, I thank you for doing, for putting that money towards the shuttle, because that is a step in the right direction. We do have a POI issue, I do appreciate that.
Can I address some other things, or is this not your time?
Sure, you're there, you got the mic. Just give me, again, I've been sworn in. I think that young lady over here read something about the first line of the letter that was sent. Could you please read that first line when it was sent?
"The Vero Beach Hotel and Spa requires all employees to park off-site, they are not permitted to park on property at any time."
So, maybe they are required, that's the answer.
Well, they weren't required to take the shuttle, I think was the question.
"All employees that work during the a.m. shift and during the day departing prior to 6:00 p.m. are required to use the shuttle bus."
Couple things. One, the hotel, just so everybody's aware, is a condo hotel, so-
Your hotel is the same ownership system as the other people, your condos.
So, they are owners. They're allowed to use the units 45 days a month, or a year, excuse me. So, to that respect, they're the same, as far as we're concerned, we love Vero and heavily invested in Vero and love this community. So, we don't want this community to turn into a South Beach per se, that's not the idea at all. Noise, there's an existing bar there today that's been there since 2007, and current dining out there to the east that's been there since 2007. There's not a, there's no difference, there won't be a bandstand like it was said, there's not a band that's going to be playing on a daily basis, nor is there. You know, yes, our people are there on vacation, we don't want to cause complaints for our guests, they won't return, so we're not going to have bands and noise, much like they don't want, they're on vacation, these people are on vacation. They don't want the noise either. So, that is why that beach bar closes earlier, to reduce that noise, and people go into Cobalt, or they go to Bobby's, actually. Parking, we can't control where people park, all we know is we do provide valet, we can't police everybody driving down the street. We try to help with the shuttle, thought that would be helpful to the other business owners in the area to park their employees as well as guests that are in town. I don't think guests really know about it, I think it was driven more towards employees, but I could be wrong on that. We're here to support the community, I think that's it. Lighting under the new bar, this was approved by the DEP. The lights will be under the bar, not directed towards the turtles. I think there is a couple new lights, but they're faced in. Okay, that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Lee.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question to repeat. Basically, you're saying there's no major change to this Tiki Bar except to put a roof over it, is that correct?
Well, what I'm saying is that this business exists there today, that's what I'm saying. Is it being moved around and shifted? Yes. But the business today exists, and it's been there since 2007. There are current people dining there, there's a current beach bar there.
Yeah.
We do have a band that plays on the weekends, not every weekend, but there's a steel drum type thing, there's music that plays daily. You know, we don't have a large amount of complaints that wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be playing music if there was complaints. People are here to vacation, enjoy the sea, enjoy the turtles, go for a swim in the ocean. They don't want to get eaten by sharks either, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One further comment, I would like to make that the difference between what's there now and what's coming is an additional 22 seats. There'll be 22 seats.
Yeah, thank you.
Could I have a clarification on this additional? They already have a, as I stated before, they already have like a little cover over for people eat. Now, are they moving that bar part of the, where it is presently, out to the end and doing away with the other bar?
Yes.
Because before, it sounded like he was going to have both of them.
No.
Okay. Then the question I must ask is, why does he need to move the bar just to cover the seats?
I think that's a question, for the same reason, a lot of people do a lot of things, they want it.
And the second part of my question is, I was of the opinion this was a hotel, now he just says it's a condominium?
It's a condominium hotel. The ownership is owned by individuals-
Oh, I understand condominium law, because there are, the Sunshine Law takes in the condominium, part of the condominium law. And one of the questions I have, which probably doesn't really refer to, maybe it does refer to you, but in most condominium laws, which 50 states in the United States have the same type of condominium law, to do this kind of construction, you have to get approval from your own condominium owners. And to make, before you can do that, it has to be allowed to them. Now, before you get into any kind of major problems, has he got the approval from his condominium owners? So, as I said, this may not be in your department, but sooner or later, it comes back to somewhere through the state of Florida under the Sunshine Law, Sunshine Law. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to take, right now, we're going to take a five-minute break, and that's because we've been going a long time. So, right now, we'll be back at 4:20.